Okay, Roberta, we're on? Okay. Okay. Well, good afternoon. And welcome. And today is June 21st. It is a little after 1:30. And this begins the fiscal year 2010-11 budget hearings for the county of Ventura. We have a proceeding we're going to go through here. I'd like to open the county's hearings on the adoption of the budget and to receive public testimony, which we will do later today. And we have budget times that are scheduled. Public testimony will start at 6 o'clock. Hearings will continue on a daily basis. Must be completed within 14 calendar days. And the official proceedings are for recommended budgets of the County General Fund, Fire Protection District, Watershed Protection District, Water Works District, Private Redevelopment Agency, and other non-General Fund activities under the control of the Board of Supervisors. Now open for public comment and comment from departments and agencies. So that officially opens this afternoon's proceedings. And we'll have an opportunity at this time for the, pardon me, opening remarks and the CEO presentation, recommendations, and staff reports by our CEO Marty Robinson. And then we will have remarks, opportunity for the board members, and then we'll proceed through the agency presentations. And I will be asking those agencies, if you wish to make comments and you say no, and the board has no questions, then we'll see you on your way. So we don't keep you here all afternoon. All right. Very good. Let's begin.
Thank you, Chair Long. Paul and I will be doing the CEO's presentation together. I want to start with the order of events which are on your screens, and I think you've gone through them in some details. The biggest important issue is that our public hearing for the public to make comment starts at 6:00 PM tonight. It's important that people be here to answer questions if the board has some at that point in time. Your board can start deliberations after that, and hopefully we will have a budget adopted sometime very soon because we have a very busy schedule tomorrow and I think the next day. So that's overall in terms of the events. Moving on to our guiding principles, as you know, that one of our guiding principles is living within our means. And you recall that the first law of when you find yourself in a hole, you quit digging. We have, as an organization, quit digging some time ago, but through no actions of our own, the sands keep shifting under our feet and we have to reposition ourselves. And the budget that we have presented to you today is certainly one that has taken a great deal of effort on part of our employees and our managers to reposition ourselves in such a way that we are not facing some of the huge detrimental steps that other organizations are facing. Our employees have taken a 3% cut relative to retirement contribution. Our managers have taken that cut. And our managers have done a yeoman's effort in terms of managing their budgets over the last two years and looking into next year and the issues that we have confronting us in terms of the state. We continue with our principles, including openness with the community. We are very upfront about what the costs of things are so that our community knows the issues. We talk about things like retirement and the implications for our budget. Tomorrow afternoon, your board is having a presentation by the actuary for our retirement system who will be going back over retirement. I would suggest that your board's probably the most well-informed board of supervisors relative to retirement issues probably in the state because we make an effort to keep you educated as well as the general public about those kinds of costs. Additionally, we want to continue delivering county services efficiently and effectively. In terms of an overview of the budget that's being brought forward today, our total budget appropriations for the entire budget are equal to about the 2009-10 adopted budget. Our general fund appropriations at $879 million is up by 1.9% from '09-10. And our general fund, general purpose revenue is at $315 million, up only 1.4% from the '09-10 adopted budget. And the general fund's full-time equivalent positions at $4,721 is down 46 positions from '09-10 adopted budget. And we are still down from the '03-04 budget. So we continue to be ratcheting, and that only happens because our managers are out there figuring out how to do it with less. So with that, we can skip over the instructions and then Mr. Jersey.
Thank you. As you know, we presented your board with our preliminary budget on June 8th, and since that time, since we printed that book, actually, we printed the book sometime in May, so we have a cutoff point basically at the beginning of May where all transactions taking place relative to next year's budget have to be included after the preliminary budget is presented. We have a number of post, what we call post-preliminary adjustments, which you should have received a copy of. The key post-preliminary adjustment is an increase in secured property taxes of $2.5 million. This is due to the fact that the assessed value, the assessor has, is confident that the reduction in assessed value is not going to be the two, a little over 2% that we had initially anticipated, but right around 1% reduction. So that will increase our secured property taxes by about $2.5 million. How we, how are we recommending those dollars be allocated? First is increasing contingency by seven, almost 750,000, 744,000 to get our contingency back to our recommended $2 million level. Prior to these, to this recommended action, the contingency was a little bit over, a little bit more than 1.25 million. So we're recommending that the contingency be replenished and reestablished at $2 million. We're recommending we increase sheriff appropriations by about $1.15 million and then increase district attorney appropriations by 600,000, and those all add up to $2.5 million. So we are recommending these three actions take place as far as the increase in secured property taxes. Included in our overall increase in appropriations, these are, these are the total post-preliminary adjustments that are included for the general fund and then the non-general fund below. We have $2.9 million. The difference between the 2.5 and the 2.9 are revenues offset appropriations that we had, we had identified, some in humans, majority of them actually in human services for their programs. Regardless, we have $2.962 million in increased appropriations to 2.912 million in revenue, and then we've decreased our designation for health care by $50,000 based on your board's action and sometime at the beginning of, I think it was at the end of May, to transfer these dollars to, as a contribution to Canejo Clinic out in Thousand Oaks. So we reduced our designation for health care by $50,000 and increased our full-time equivalent positions by nine, primarily in Human Services Agency again, and then increase in contingency of $350,000. This is the net increase relative to the, our preliminary budget. Our preliminary budget had the contingency at $1.65 million, and then post-preliminary adjustments brought it down by another roughly $400,000. And then we're adding back the $750,000, but the net effect of those two transactions is a $350,000 increase in our contingency to bring it up to the $2 million. In the non-general fund area, increase in appropriations of roughly $18 million and an increase of revenue of about $2.2 million and six positions. The increase in appropriations are primarily for construction projects. And so that's, that's why some of the watershed protection district projects, we think we're going to be going forward on. That's why the big increase in appropriations that they'll be spending out of their, basically out of their fund balance to, to support construction projects.
And that's where the increase in revenues, when you say increase in revenue, it's they're taking their fund balance?
Well, we, we don't have fund balance specifically here because the increase in revenue was revenue that they will be bringing in, not the fund balance. The difference would be covered with, that's correct.
They're bringing in the revenue.
They're bringing in the revenues. They being the non-general fund areas are bringing in revenues, and the non-general fund areas are applying their fund balance toward these construction projects. Correct.
Could I also ask, where possible, where you have numbers that you're showing us that are different than the preliminary budget that we have before, as you can point that out?
As far as?
Well, for example, the full-time equivalent employees is different under the general fund budget that's in here than what you're showing. The revenue percentage increase is different than, over the two years, is different than what is in this budget that you have before. So when you notice those areas where you're showing us different numbers than what we were given in the last week or two?
As a clarification, aren't all of these different?
Yeah, all of these are, are the impacts of the post-preliminary adjustments. We don't have it by line item. I mean, in your listing of post-preliminary, that is the adjustments that we're recommending making in the list of post-preliminary adjustments.
So everything you're showing is different?
Everything that's on your list is, yes. Everything we're showing right now is different as far as adjustments. Correct. These are all post our preliminary budget that we presented. So this $2.9 million, almost $3 million in general fund is, is different. That's all different information. General fund contingency adjustments, as we started out, $1.65 million as we, as we said before, $395,000 roughly in board-approved human services adjustments, and then increase in property taxes, just to reconcile our post, post-preliminary budget contingency at $2 million, just to show you how we ran through those numbers as far as the, as far as how we got back to 2 million because there's a couple different numbers as far as how the contingency dollars. General fund debt service adjustments, this is something that, as your board is well aware, we made a final, your board made a final decision regarding the land use system, that the general fund would pick up half of the, half of the cost of the, of the new system. As we adjusted our debt service for the land use system, our new debt service is instead of $3.5 million in the preliminary budget that we have, it's now $1.3 million in available appropriations that's, we left in, in the debt service budget unit is about $2.2 million. Back to your board for your feedback and input regarding that $2.2 million. We have left it in debt service. We know fundamentally that we have significant capital needs going forward. So that's why our office left it in the debt service for the time being, again, waiting for information back from your board and prioritization. But we have the general fund, Moore Park Clinic, for $4 million. You can just read right down the list. There's a lot of capital needs that we do have out there. The primary ones are upgrades in, in computer systems, a lot of software involved in this, in these capital needs. And in the non-general fund area, primarily in the medical center, HCA Systems and Colston, which, which VCMC would be renovating and using for their services. And of course, the hospital retrofit that is, is outstanding on the VCMC and Santa Paula Hospitals. Potential state budget impacts, I think we touched base with your board a couple times, a number of times in that regard. State prisoners coming back to county jails, these are some of their proposals at the time, and, and got the latest information this morning that the, that the state senate, I believe, has a quote-unquote additional realignment proposal that they're going through. So we are, I think the bottom line, last bullet point in this regard is we expect protracted negotiations regarding the state budget. I think one of their schemes will be to hopefully wait out the economy and increase their revenues is one of their, one of their roles. I think they did see increases in the month of May, although April came in worse than they had projected originally, but May came in, in pretty nice for the state. So my guess is that they're not going to do anything until they see June, at least. I think these, I think we've discussed a number of these items already. I think the key, one of the key ones clearly is the elimination of Cow Works, which we don't think, we think is pretty much a non-starter from the state standpoint. And the state controller has identified a short-term borrowing risk relative to their overall operations. This is the overall general fund budget. Supervisor Parks, just so your information, the appropriations on the adopted budget for last, for last year is 863 million. It's 882 million for this year. And then the direct revenue is, as you see, and the net cost, $318 million. Our general purpose revenue has gone up by a little over $4 million, $4.3 million. And you see, we've used designations as your board directed of $2.7 million. Public safety contribution, general fund, as you know, is here, our general fund increase from $311 million to $315.8 million. Of those dollars, that's 4.3 million, that's the 4.3 million in the blue. Our public safety contribution increase to those four public safety departments is $6.5 million. So you see that as far as public safety is concerned, we've given them all of the new money plus additional money from other areas, frankly. And I think that, is it enough for public safety? I think that it's not quite enough for public safety, however, it's as much as, as we have from a overall standpoint, you see, it's clearly in excess of any new revenue that we have. Here's our ordinance 48. I think we pointed this out before. Calculated 4088 requirement is right around 170, little under 175 million, and we show you about $4.4 million above our requirement under the 4088 calculation, assuming we're going to, we follow, we do follow that, that calculation. These are our general fund net cost allocations. See, the public safety is at still at 56% of the overall general fund, and the rest are pretty much equal to, these, these numbers are relatively the same as last year, but, and that's because of the fact that there's not a lot of net cost increase, frankly. I mean, there's only $4 million of, of net cost increase, and the majority of it went to the public safety areas. Overall conclusion is that our budget is a living document. Of course, your board knows we've made budget adjustments in July for the, the previous year, I mean, for that, that particular year. So we, we continue to, to claim that that's a living document. We are maintaining structurally balanced. Service levels may be impacted. Our long-term sustainability budgets, based on locally, we think there is some sustainability. However, we have two major issues outstanding, and that is the state and then the retirement contributions we have going forward. And I think the retirement contributions, as we've noted before, are going to be a local, the major stressor on a local level. And I think that's all we have for our presentation this afternoon. And... That's it.
Okay.
If there's any questions, we're more than happy to try to answer.
Are there any questions at this time? Anything else, Ms. Robinson?
No, we'll ask you to adopt the adjustments later on in the, in the proceedings.
Okay. All right, then, at this time, thank you, Mr. Jersey. At this time, we have an opportunity for board members, if anyone would like to make opening remarks about the status of county budgets. No gnashing of teeth?
No.
It's not necessary, but I'll offer the chance if you wish.
So are we then adopting the adjustments as we, as we proceed?
We're going to hear department presentations.
First. Okay, and then, well, wait for my turn later.
Okay. There aren't any opening remarks of board members. I think it's all pretty much been said. So the proceedings then for, I think I've already gone through that as far as the public hearing process goes. We're going to follow the sequence and timing with the agency and departments, and then again, the public testimony at 6:00, and then we'll proceed till we get the end result of a budget. So at this time, I believe we have somewhere, my piece of paper, folks who are going to wish to speak to the board. I'm going to, what I'm going to do is I'm going to go through the list and ask, or ask departments if they wish to speak to the board and if the board has any questions. And then we're going to go to those departments that I know wish to speak to the board. That way, truly, if you wish to go on with the business of the day, you can. So I will start first with the assessor. You are going to make a presentation, okay? Auditor Controller?
Auditor.
Anything from the board? Civil Service Commission? Any que, any board members who have questions of any of these departments, they can certainly come up and answer those questions. County Clerk and Recorder?
No presentation.
Thank you. County Counsel? It's your last shot, no?
No, no, delegate it to me. I say no presentation.
Okay. Good move. Treasury Tax Collector? Ag Commissioner? Animal Services?
No presentation.
Farm Advisor?
No presentation.
Public Works Agency?
No presentation.
Resources Management?
No presentation.
Area Agency on Aging?
No presentation.
Healthcare Agency?
No presentation.
I know HSA will be. District Attorney, Probation, Public Defender?
No presentation.
Sheriff?
No presentation.
Child Support Services will be making a presentation. Ventura County Library?
Do we have someone from the Ventura County Library that can talk?
We can trail this and make sure that someone is here. Airports?
No presentation.
Harbor?
No presentation.
And I do, I do have some questions for Harbor, just one big one.
Just one big one? Okay, so hold Harbor, you, you stick around. General Services Agency?
No presentation.
Information Technology?
No presentation.
Fire Protection District?
No presentation.
And there's nothing from the RDA, if I'm aware. Okay. So those of you, if you're not making a presentation, the board hasn't said, wait, wait, we want to talk to you, you're certainly free to leave. You can always listen in if we all of a sudden say, wait, come back, come back. We'll call you and give you plenty of time to get here also, so you don't have to race All right, then, we're going to go ahead with, well, let me ask, since you have a question, supervisor for the Harbor, let's deal with that and see if it's more complicated or if there's some work to be done, then you can ask the question, and then we'll go through those we've lined up to talk to the board.
Thank you. The, the big question I have, I think about the Air Pollution Control District and how we were always looking out into the future and trying to get what we refer to as a soft landing because we knew revenues were decreasing and what measures we were going to be taking. So I guess the big question I had for Harbor is, can you look out further than a year or two and tell us what you see in terms of always being able to, within your enterprise, fund the operations?
Yes, good afternoon. Lynn Krieger from the Harvard Department. Are you asking if we will be able to live within our revenue?
Yes, in the coming years, because I, we are seeing a decline in, a significant decline in revenue, and just wondering what you see in the future.
Yeah, well, we are, of course, in boat slips, restaurants, and hotels, which, as I keep saying, are three of the hardest-hit industries that there are. Actually, our revenue has not declined as much as I feared it might by this point in the recession. You see ups and downs in our budget, but some of that has to do with, as you discussed, with Public Works realizing money from reserves that's for capital costs and so forth. That can be a million dollars in a year, $2 million in a year, capital expenditure, which can make the budget, you know, fluctuate. We intend, we, we've done with less before. We intend to live within the revenue of the fund for all intents and purposes. If there was a complete economic collapse, could we? I don't know. That's probably not your biggest concern if that happened. But so far, we've been able to manage pretty well within, within the decline. We do projections actually out to seven years internally, and we refresh those every year. And we watch our cash actually daily, so we try and stay on top of it.
Okay, well, that's good that you're looking out to seven years, and I was just, I see those numbers and they are alarming to me, and I just didn't want to get into a position where we now have to go into the general fund to help subsidize the Harvard Department. But you're, you're seeing that you have sufficient revenue over the next seven years at least that will keep you operating within your means.
Yeah, it depends which economists you read at this point, but yes.
Okay, anything else? All right, thank you. All right, thank you. Okay, now, we'll proceed with those who've asked to make a presentation, and I'll start with the probation agency, Mr. Varela.
I always like to get any leadoff, use a baseball analogy. Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity, oh, and Ms. Robinson, thank you for the opportunity to come and speak to you about our, our budget. It is gonna be a long presentation, but I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about some of the things that we're working on, and what we think our budget's gonna look like for next year. So, Roberta, I just pressed the middle one here, the arrow. Okay. Before I get started, I wanna talk a little bit about some of the core services that we provide as an agency. Here are some figures from two thousand and nine. Our agency processes quite a number of out-of-custody juvenile citations throughout the county, approximately ninety-two hundred in the year of two thousand and nine. And what we do is we divert the vast majority of these juvenile offenders from the, from the juvenile justice system by providing out-of-court sanctions and informal handling. We also prepared about four, forty-nine hundred adult and juvenile sentencing reports for the court. It's the main tool that the judges use when they're handing down sentences for juvenile offenders who are adjudicated of criminal offenses, and also for adults convicted of felony offenses. In two thousand and nine, we supervised over eighteen thousand adults on probation, and roughly about twenty-five hundred juveniles on probation in the community, many of which were, are on probation for some pretty serious crimes. We operate the juvenile facilities. In two thousand and nine, we had an average dated population of about one hundred and eighty-six. Ninety-four of those are in our pre-adjudication side, our detention side, and about ninety-two, on average, in our commitment side. These are youth serving court-ordered commitments. And then we operate our juvenile alternative programs. In two thousand and nine, that is work furlough, and our work release programs. Work furlough in two thousand and nine saved roughly about thirty-five thousand jail bed days while our, we were able to divert adult inmates into our work release program, about fifteen hundred of them in, in, in two thousand and nine. So altogether, combined, we provide services to about eighteen percent of the adult committed population in the county.
Mr. Varela, before you go on, could you just, very quickly, the distinction between detention and commitment?
Detention are kids that are pre-adjudication, so, which means that the pre-sentence, they, they're arrested, they're brought into our facility, they're going through the juvenile court process, which can take anywhere from three weeks to, to four weeks on average. And then if the court releases them, they go back out into the community. If the court elects them to serve a period of time in custody or a commitment, then they are in our commitment program, and we can keep youth up there, sometimes up to a year in custody.
And your last bullet point, what percentage of your capacity do you think you're using at this point in time for this, are you, is it, in terms of jail alternative programs?
You know, our work furlough facility has a capacity of, rated capacity of, Joan, help me out?
Two hundred and thirty-five.
So, on average, our, our population in two thousand and nine was probably in the area of...
(inaudible) about ninety.
About ninety. Ninety inmates.
Thank you.
Here's what our budget looks like for fiscal year ten, eleven. We have sixty point nine million dollars in total expenditures. Of the sixty point nine million, about, roughly about forty-five percent, we get in the way of revenue from federal, state, private organizations, and probation client fees. So it's about twenty-seven point three, and then an additional thirty-three point six million dollars in net county cost. We have five hundred and ten point five FTEs, and five hundred and fourteen authorized positions. We were busy this fiscal year. One of the things that we did in conjunction, and working closely with the sheriff, is we implemented our pre-trial supervised release program.
(inaudible) like, you have a right to do this, and for everyone around you, this is like the death...[881.12][881.12](laughing). A subliminal message to try to get us to give you more money?
(inaudible).[888.51][888.51](laughing).
You know, I heard that at first, and I thought, is that, is that just the, is that just the echo here? So again, this fiscal year, we've been pretty busy, along with the sheriff. We worked to develop our pre-trial supervised release program, and to date, we saved about three hundred, three thousand jail bed days.
Mark, you also, there was also some general savings relative to medical attention, was there not?
Yeah, some, some of the, the folks that participated in our supervised release program had medical emergencies that were taken via an ambulance to, to the hospital, which, if, if that happened while the individuals were in custody, it's, it's an enormous amount of resources to take them to, to the hospital facilities, and then stand by as they get treated, and then brought back to the facility. So that saves some, some, some costs. We were also awarded five new grants, ranging anywhere from twelve to forty-eight months, and bringing into the agency about one point eight million dollars. And during this year, we also implemented some agency-wide reduction strategies to absorb the two point nine million dollar shortfall that we had. And I've included some here, but obviously, I can go on. And we have had a hiring freeze of our sworn positions since October two thousand and eight, which is, we've continued that hiring freeze through, through this fiscal year. We consolidated housing units and restructured custodial programs at the juvenile facilities to save money. We disbanded our adult domestic violence unit, specialized unit, and absorbed the cases in our other field units. And we reorganized our juvenile field services division. Twenty-six positions became vacant during the course of this fiscal year, which, most of them through attrition, and some, some through other avenues, and we did not fill behind them. We also eliminated our extra help in our student aid positions, except for those extra help folks that were tied into our correction services officer classifications. Here are the challenges that we see on the horizon for this coming fiscal year. Sixty-two percent of our revenues, or seventeen million dollars that we get primarily from the state, come from volatile and unstable funding streams, such as the vehicle licensing fees, Prop 172 realignment, and our probationer client fee collections. We wanna ensure that we maintain appropriate population levels at work furlough, our work release programs, to ensure fully realized revenues. We wanna continue also looking at ways to manage appropriate youth in the community per our commitment to juvenile detention's alternatives. Make sure that we detain those kids who need to be tamed in our facilities, and those kids that we can manage in community programs, to manage them in community programs. This would result in a lower population at the juvenile facilities, which will save money in terms of payroll services and supply costs. We're paying real close attention to the VLF, because it does have a sunset date of June thirtieth, two thousand and eleven. And I know that the chief probation officers of California are working really hard to make sure that, that the VLF continues, because it funds a lot of our, our juvenile justice programs. And we wanna make sure that we can get VLF either moved over, either extend the sunset date on the VLF, or move it over to, to another stable funding stream.
Mark, it's seventeen million, that's a tremendous amount of money, that sixty-two percent. How do you project that? How did you come up with that number?
Well, that, the, the VLF funds our Juvenile Justice Crime Prevention Act programs. There's five programs out in the community that that provides funding for, and also our juvenile probation and CAPS funding, which pays for custodial programs in our facility, and also helps offset the costs of, of jail beds, or, or inmate beds.
Is that seventeen million over a number of years?
That's seventeen million annually.
Oh, annually?
Annually.
Oh. That's a tremendous amount of, of money, too. You know, that's unstable.
Yeah, it is. And of course, we just don't know what's, what's coming on, on the horizon from the state. I included our offender treatment program, I use that as an example. And the governors may revise that the proposal was to be eliminated. We just, we just don't know what's, what's going on, we just don't know what's gonna happen as they near, near a budget. So we have to prepare, embrace ourselves for the unknown, which is very difficult to do.
And what's your dollar amount for VLF alone?
VLF is about five million dollars.
Thank you.
To our agency. And if, again, if we, if we take further cuts in our, in our revenues, this is some of the, list of some of the things that we anticipate could happen. Demotions, layoffs, reduce or eliminate a non-mandated probationer services, and so support functions that go along with those services. A big increase in the size of our adult and juvenile offender caseloads, and a stretched workforce. With the, with us not filling behind twenty-six positions that were vacated during the course of this fiscal year, our workforce is, is stretched, and more cuts would stretch them even further, and that's a big concern that I have. So the conclusion is, and getting back to Mr. Dursey's statement at the beginning, we are gonna live within our means, or do the best we can to live within our means, but I just wanna make sure that people are aware that further reductions and our eliminations to these revenues at the state or federal level will mean an impact on our programs and services to the community and to probationers.
Okay.
That is it.
Yes.
I commend Mark and his staff for the JJC programs we have for the children, for the youth there, excellent programs.
Thank you.
I attended a few of the meetings there, and I just wanna commend you for that good work you're doing there.
Thank you.
In your budget.
I felt that we've gotten tremendous support from the board, from the CEO's office, to help us with those programs.
Supervisor Ford?
Mark, I think like you, like the rest of the leadership here in the counties, working hard. I mean, a lot of people don't see a lot of layoffs coming here in the county, but you see these twenty-six non-replaced people that have gone, and I appreciate that, and I know the public does, and it makes it tough, what you're trying to do. But I, I'm excited about what these managers have done, trying to work around all this and still provide the services. So I know it's hard, but I appreciate what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. I went around to our area offices, I've been going around to our area offices thanking staff, because they've taken the majority of the, of the increased workload, and they've done this tremendous job. Our managers have done a great job in order to, to keep things afloat, but the, the staff have really stepped up to the plate, and have really helped us out.
And I'd just, thank you also. I know you do a tremendous job, your entire agency does, and I think we are very concerned, and we'll closely be engaged with the realignment proposals if they get legs, and I expect they're going to, and we'll need to work closely on them. The shift of state juvenile parole services is, is already, and the governors may revise, but may, I expect will continue to be in everybody's list. So noting the impacts on us, so appreciate the work. Others?
And, yeah, the, the probation agency plays a, a more behind-the-scenes, but critical role in sort of lubricating the just, you know, our criminal justice system. And it's good to see the creativity here that you've engaged in, and you will need more of that. But, but just because it's behind the scenes, certainly the board recognizes how important it is, absolutely. The rest of the criminal justice system would really struggle without having that lubricant of probation there. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all, appreciate you being here. Okay, next, I will call up the District Attorney, Mr. Totten.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Madam Chair, members of the board, and Ms. Robinson. During the May eighteenth budget study session, I provided your board with extensive comment and visual aids that detailed the impact of both last year's three million dollar budget reduction that we suffered, as well as the additional reduction that is contemplated in the proposed FY two thousand and eleven budget. At that time, you will recall, I requested an additional one point three million in supplemental funding to avoid significant layoffs, cuts in vital programs, and those things that would further harm our ability to protect this community. In the meantime, I'm, I'm grateful for having the opportunity to meet with each of you privately, to provide more specifics on the gravity of our circumstances. And today, I am still requesting the one point three million dollars in supplemental funding. While I have great respect for your CEO, and am grateful that she is now proposing a six hundred thousand dollar supplement, unfortunately, this amount is not sufficient to avoid layoffs and related reductions in safety services in the District Attorney's Office. As you know, there are primarily two circumstances that are really driving our budget challenges. First, a decline in Proposition 172 revenue that's affecting all public safety agencies. And then, secondly, spiking retirement costs that are primarily due to the downturn of the stock market. And of course, both of these circumstances are linked to our economy and its downturn. Historically, in the District Attorney's Office, Proposition 172 revenue has represented about eighteen percent of our budgeted revenues. For FY two thousand and eleven, Proposition 172 funds will be less than fourteen percent of our budgeted revenues. This differential, oddly enough, by happenstance equates to exactly one point three million dollars. So it's clear that 172 funding is affecting us in a powerful way. Now thankfully, there is reason for some optimism. According to the State Controller, statewide sales tax revenues are improving. From May of two thousand and nine to May of two thousand and ten, statewide sales tax revenues, according to Controller Chung, increased by twelve point five percent. And you may have noticed as well, another beacon of optimism is General Motors just announced last week that contrary to their normal practice, they are not closing their plants in California for several weeks over the summer, because the demand for their automobiles is so great. That's a good thing, a lot of sales tax revenue is generated by auto sales. Certainly, our budgeted retirement cost will be increasing over the next few years to address the loss, loss in the county's pension fund. Although, it is interesting that our FY two thousand and eleven retirement cost increase of six point three percent, which is about three hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, was actually smaller than the FY two thousand and eleven increase of ten point five, two percent. While a return to levels of Prop 172 revenue, and I know I've had this discussion with Mr. Dursey, will not fully cover our retirement cost, it will still go a long way towards correcting our budget challenge. And one point three million dollars in one-time funding will, I believe, provide a vitally important bridge to a turnaround in these revenues. There's no question that we are living in the most difficult financial periods in our history, and government at all levels is being challenged unlike any prior time, at least in my professional life. During times like these, some are tempted to suggest that we should simply change the model in the DA's office. I happen to mention this to one of my colleagues in law enforcement, who is also a police chief. His response humbled me, and yet captures, I think, the essence of this issue. He said emphatically, "That's wrong, because the Ventura District Attorney's Office is the model, and if it's changed, it won't matter what we do on the streets in our communities, because your office will not be able to deliver justice in the courthouse." Now by sharing this anecdote, I don't mean to suggest that we're unwilling to change. In the District Attorney's Office, we have changed a great deal to deal with declining general fund support from your board, and we are constantly looking for new ways to be more efficient, and refine our business processes to maximize cost effectiveness without compromising justice and safety. These efforts have included our extraordinary success, and it is truly extraordinary when you compare us to any other district attorney's office in this state. Success in obtaining outside funding sources, just from state, federal, other local governmental agencies and entities, and even private grants. We've done an exceptional job that has taken the pressure off the general fund. Just a recent issue, or a recent example, is the real estate fraud grant. We were one of only seven jurisdictions in the entire country to receive funding for real estate fraud. We've also put in place office reorganizations and reclassification of allocations to less costly... We have civilian staff rather than investigators that examine forensic evidence, that the high-tech task force examine financial records and serve subpoenas and engage in other types of more basic investigative tasks. Finally, careful stewardship of these resources is one of our primary successes over this time period. Since I've been district attorney, the office of district attorney has returned nearly $6 million to the county general fund through year-end fund balances, through careful management of the resources entrusted to us, and we certainly will continue to look for cost efficiencies. This morning, I met with Supervisor Bennett, and we talked about, I think, positions and maintenance of effort and what we needed to be able to do our job, and he had a list of positions that were the total number of attorney positions and investigators for our office, and we had a very good discussion, but that motivated us to provide your board with some more information on that topic, so I know we would have liked to have gotten these to you sooner, but they are literally hot off the press. I have a series of charts.
Greg, I have a question. Maybe clarification. You mentioned earlier $1.3 million one-time additional funds. Do you consider those one-time because you're looking at an uptick of 172 and other funds in the future? Is that why you have them one-time?
Yes, and we're trying to avoid layoffs this year.
And Mr. DA, you call that a bridge?
Yeah, a bridge forward. A bridge forward to hopefully our little bit better time.
And I think that's important, you know, because we want to get you from point A to point B for this fiscal year.
Right.
Also, go ahead, finish up.
The chart that I've given you, there are only two charts. One shows the relative, the number of attorney positions that are financed through the general fund over a period of time versus by outside revenue sources. The second chart shows the same information for investigators, and the significant thing to note about these is, and the general fund positions are covered in blue of the stacked bar chart, and the revenue offset are red. What you can see from over the last decade in the attorney ranks, the general fund has declined in its responsibility for attorney positions from '90 and 2001 to '63 today. That's a significant decline in general fund responsibility. Meanwhile, the number of revenue offset positions has gone up rather significantly. It's almost doubled. Likewise, in the investigator ranks, the general fund investigators that were financed, we had 35 of those in 2001 and 2002 financed through the general fund, and today we only have 24. So, as you can see, over a long period of time, the general fund's financing of positions in the district attorney's office has declined rather precipitously, and so that has put us in a position where, as I noted on May 18th, has really contracted profoundly the number of positions that we can dedicate to traditional street crime. This type of decline in general, or this decline in general fund support has also forced us, yes Supervisor, there was.
I was going to ask you a quick question here. Does that mean that you're investigating less cases as a result of that?
It means that we have less investigative resources to investigate traditional crime. More of our investigative resources now are focused on non-traditional crime, things like workers' compensation fraud, auto insurance fraud, the real estate fraud, and other areas where we get separate funding from other sources. It's a good thing, because we can do those other programs, but it's symptomatic of a larger, long-term contraction in resources for street crimes.
Okay.
The decline of general fund support has also forced us to significantly reduce the number of misdemeanor complaints we filed. Last year, we filed nearly 8,000 fewer misdemeanor complaints than the prior year, and I discussed the types of cases with each of you that are involved. When budget reductions force such actions, even with relatively minor crimes, the consequences for crimes are reduced. The deterrent effect of swift and certain punishment is harmed, and our community inevitably feels the impact in its safety. But there be no mistake, the district attorney's office has and always will be dependent upon, absolutely dependent upon, highly trained attorneys and investigators to file, investigate, and prosecute our cases. And the study you commissioned here in Ventura County several years ago verifies that we provide better results and do so much more cost-effectively than virtually all of our colleagues in comparable jurisdictions. Last year's $3 million budget cut to the district attorney's office reduced us to staffing levels of more than a decade ago, and today we are annually filing 1,200 more cases than we did, 1,200 more felonies than we did at the end of the 1990s. Today, we need your help. We desperately need your help to protect this community, and this is precisely the type of rainy day, this is precisely the type of need that reserves are set aside for. So, I'm here again on the heels of last year's $3 million budget cut, asking your board to allocate one-time funding of $1.3 million to an agency that is charged with the duty to perform government's first responsibility, the protection of our citizenry. By doing so, you will save jobs of long-term employees that perform vital safety services, you will help crime victims, and you will prevent further erosion of our ability to protect this community that we all care so much about. Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Further questions, yes?
Greg, one of the things that you did say was that, "We're police chief, don't change your model," but it sounds like you've done a little bit of adjustments to try to compensate some of this by having different professionals do different jobs that may be less expensive professionals doing some of the other jobs. You've made some adjustments to try to compensate through some of this.
We've made a lot of adjustments. For example, just as just one small example, in our misdemeanor crime prosecution, I already mentioned the number, the fewer numbers of cases that we're filing, but we also do a lot of misdemeanor case workup with paralegals. You can't do that in felonies, the crimes are simply too serious. It does have a cost, you know, in terms of our success, but that's one example. We currently, I think, have, pending with the Human Resources Department, a proposal to use IT staff for certain work at the high-tech task force rather than investigators. So, anytime we see something that can appropriately be done with less expensive, less costly staff, we've made those changes.
Okay, so that's helping that model for the long term, knowing that we've got this going, so these are just not a real quick fix, it's just where you're starting to make this whole new model. I don't want to say that you've changed your whole model, but I mean, you are changing some of those areas you can for the long term to help reduce costs going forward.
Sure.
Okay, great.
Supervisor?
I want to commend the DA for, on that real estate fraud case that you solved the other day, are working on. I remember when you went to Oxtard and you set up that, with the 211 Don Borrow Trouble with the City of Oxtard and the Board of Realtors, that's working.
It is making a difference, and you know from being in that profession.
Exactly, right, being in that profession and getting those type of brokers and agents that are fraudulently, you know, abusing our public is, you know, it's not good, so I want to thank you for your good work on that.
Thank you very much.
Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate your data here. Now, to try to continue to go back and forth, this is a little bit different data than what I have from the CEO's office this morning, so I'm going to ask, so actually, I'm thinking this might happen, I have some of the CEO's data, I just want to put up on the slide here, so could you go ahead and, I don't know if you, I'm going to just try to clarify this. This is just a budget, and let me stay on this slide just for a second. You mentioned that you have a $1.3 million cut, and I just want to make sure I'm reading the charts accurately. You actually have a budget increase, but it's not an increase enough to cover all of your increased costs, is that what?
Correct, and even if, even maintaining the 15 vacancies that are part of our mitigation plan for the $3 million cut from last year.
Okay, so you have a budget increase, it's just not as much of an increase, it's a cut from what you would need to
Cover our costs.
Cover your costs at this point in time. And if we go to the next slide, please? So, I just, we have a beginner up there, I think, on this area. Is there another slide up there? Should be two slides.
Hopefully, it's got a slide with bigger numbers than the one on the last one, because I'm having trouble seeing.
That's a quick question, let me, go ahead, finish.
It's that second, that's the next slide, I saw it to the left there. One more slide.
Okay, there's two different.
There it is. Good, okay. So, this is a, this is information I pulled out of the CEO's chart, just pulled out some of the relevant stuff.
Those are from the snapshots, I take it.
These are from, if you remember, I handed you this this morning, right? Because alls I did was take it from 2006, because it'd make the chart too big, I wanted us to be able to read it. But what I'm, I guess what I'm seeing as a difference here is, from the chart from the CEO, if we look at the district, I mean, the investigators first, the CEO's chart shows seven, 47 investigators in 2010, and 45 the year before, and you show here 50 in 2010. Between Mr. Dursey sitting close to you and the DA, do we know what's the, what, do you think you don't have 47? You think you have 50?
I think we have 50 FTEs, but remember, as a part of the mitigation plan
You're keeping some vacant.
We're keeping four.
Four vacant, all right. So, okay, so this, so you are in agreement it's because of the vacancies.
I'd need a little bit of time to go through that in detail, and we'd be happy to sit down with you and Mr. Dursey if necessary.
Okay.
Maybe Mr. Jump's got a little explanation.
Yeah, the 47 investigators reflected on there don't include the three welfare fraud investigators, so our figures include those.
Okay, there you go. All right, that gets you, okay, that gets you exactly right. So, I assume the same thing is true with the, with the attorney positions then also. Okay, all right, good. Okay, that's helpful for me at this point in time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Supervisor?
So, you had made a comment that, as part of what you've done also, like we saw with the probation, you also have unfilled positions that you haven't filled as part of what you've done. You have 15, is that what you?
Well, I had 15 as a part of last year's budget mitigation plan, and we've got a few more vacancies, and then we're concerned about layoffs beyond that.
15, you have a few more on top of the 15s, right?
Yes.
Okay, so you may have these 16 or 17 total unfilled positions or some number?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, yeah, could you, could you help me understand on your attorneys?
Sure.
You have 27 restricted attorneys.
Yes.
My guess is, the answer to this question's pretty broad, but how restricted are the attorneys? Is everybody 100% restricted, or some attorneys partially restricted? Can you help me with that?
Sure. The grants for, are, cover a myriad of responsibilities, but the typical grant that we receive through the California Office of Emergency Services that is administered by the state has expressed restrictions in it that the attorney that is assigned to that function, that we finance out of those funds, can only handle those cases. Now, you can do time studies, but what the time study does is it reduces our ability. For example, let's just hypothetically say we had an attorney who dedicated 80% of his time to the restricted cases, and the other 20%, we used him for general cases, and we would time study that, and we'd have to prove that that's the way his time is allocated. The problem with doing that is we lose the 20% in revenue from the state that we would otherwise get for that portion of his time. So, our historic practice has always been, and this predates my tenure, that when we have a specialized grant, we dedicate those people to it to make sure that we maximize the revenue we receive from that grant.
And does the revenue always cover 100% of the cost to that attorney?
Sometimes there will be attorneys that are, attorneys that are divided, and this takes into account those where we'll have not full funding. The grants also often provide for indirect revenue for various costs associated with supervision, CEO costs and things of that sort associated with administration of the grant, but typically, most of the grants we have are 100% of salaries. I believe that's right, Mr. Jump.
The one addition would be that there are some positions that are designated as revenue restricted because they generate revenue not directly from a grant, such as an asset forfeiture attorney. They bring in revenues, if you take that attorney off of that assignment, those revenues are gone.
Okay, so if you get a $50,000 grant to do something, how does, how's it, how do you handle that with that attorney, and would that be considered one of the 27 attorneys? And do you get a $50,000 grant very often, or are they always much more?
Well, for example, the community prosecutor we have in the city of Seamy Valley is funded through three separate sources, one of which is a federal grant in the amount of 50-some-thousand, and then we get $50,000 from the city of Seamy Valley, and I believe we get another 20-something thousand dollars from the city of Moore Park. So, that is, covers that individual position. If we just got $50,000, we would have to time study an attorney, and they would be restricted to a pro rata share of their time for them to cover that $50,000.
But in that situation, you wouldn't be losing any revenue because there was no revenue left on the table?
No, correct, and that's our goal in these, in these situations, is to maximize the amount of revenue we earn from them.
So, if you only get a grant that's going to cover 75% of the cost, you will time study that attorney?
Yes.
And, because you're not sacrificing any revenue?
Yes.
It's just if it's beyond 100%, if the grant or the restricted fund is beyond 100%, then you don't want to time study your attorney because you would be losing revenue?
Correct, correct. And the way we structured this chart of FTEs, it takes into account those variations in funding schemes that might not be 100%.
But if somebody's 40% grant or whatever, they'd be considered in the 27, or did you?
No, they'd be, 40% would be considered in the 27, and 60% would be considered in the 63.
Okay. All right.
I do have a question.
They'd be part of the 27 to the share that they're covered in the grant. We'd count them as a whole. My mistake.
There we go. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Greg, you just mentioned that your grants were 100% cost recovery, 100% salary recovery, or 100% cost recovery? Would be two different things.
Yeah, I think it's 100% cost recovery.
Including all indirect costs?
That we're allowed to bill.
It did vary from grant to grant, it really does. Some grants will get 75% recovery, but they require a 25% match, and so in that situation, you have 100% of attorney's time dedicated. Sorry. But you're only getting 75% of the cost recovery, but you're obligated to commit 100% of that person's time.
And so, in that case, it wouldn't be 100% cost recovery?
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to compliment you, and you mentioned it in your presentation, is the amount of grant funds that you do get, it is, it does set you apart from all the other departments, and I think it's, in a way, it also makes you a victim of your own success in a way, because you are taking some attorneys and putting it to those grants instead of keeping them, I guess we're talking as street crimes, so that's what our focus is right now, as I understand.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Other questions?
Thank you.
That's helpful, thank you.
We're good. Thank you. Appreciate the presentation and the time. Okay, now we'll have our assessor come up, Mr. Bidwell.
Thank you, Madam Chair, honorable board members.
Honorable board members, good afternoon. For the record, my name's Dan Goodwin, assessor. Congratulations Supervisor Parks and Foy. Lot of things taken care of, and now back to the regular, regular business. The, my, my presentation's pretty short. Actually, there's really kind of two things I want to cover. One of them really was stimulated by what I thought was a very important point that was made by Supervisor Parks on June 8th during the preliminary budget. The, the question had to do with supplemental assessments. The question was, I have another question regarding supplemental requests. There are some from the Sheriff's Department and the district attorneys. Do you anticipate others? And Mr. Dursley answered about, gave a background about it, talked about some of the, in fact, this was, these were the only two that had been submitted. And, and then Ms. Parks commented that how this was a remarkable thing, considering previous years, this is rather remarkable. And I thought, well, you know, there was a reason I hadn't submitted a supplemental request, but I'd like to submit a supplemental request, based on that point. But I thought, well, if I'm going to do that, I now have to explain why am I doing it today, but I didn't do it in writing ahead of time. And so the, part of the attachments that I've included for you, just to give you some background, that the, the budgeting process starts, your, your CEO has a very organized plan, and very systematic, goes through a, a project to pre, to get us to this point in time, of which for most of the departments, the really heavy work starts in February, where we're analyzing numbers as we're getting initial indications, and certainly by March, as you can see on one of those, the date, there's a date scheduled for various departments to make their presentation. We, we have to have figured out, where are we at, what can we do? And the assessors department certainly wants to be a team player in this. We understand the numbers, we can do math, we understand the pressures under the board, certainly the managers had already been positioned to participate in cuts through the 3% share of retirement costs. Many of your unions had already, by the time we got to the 8th, had already agreed to reductions in effect of net pay to their, to their employees. And so, there's a lot of participation going on countywide in this, this challenge to keep Ventura County healthier than most counties in this state. Keep us, you know, honoring, honoring the call that's upon us to, to manage the money we have, live within our means, to do a good job, to get as many services done as possible. And so, so that's, that's the background of this material. The, let's see. So, the picture, you know, the picture of what are, what are each department, certainly what the assessor is facing in terms of the assessor's budget recommendations by the CEO, was painted by the, the time we had our meeting in March. So we worked, we worked with that. Basically what we came up with, it was a plan to address it. We're, we're addressing the $432,000 cut, which is one in, for my department's size, is, feel pretty significant. It means we're basically in a budget that plan, everything has to go right. What I'm sharing with you basically is, if, if we do have surprises, if we do have issues, if we do have the unexpected, our, our budget plan stretches the, the system to the point where we have no elasticity, so we, we could have some issues that we'd have to ask you for follow-up support. Also, there's, there's a problem of some risks that, that we're going to have to endure now. We won't be able to deliver the same normal of services that we have in the past. We're going to also be looking at, you know, the appeal situation is such that, just as a reminder, each billion dollars of value that's contested between property owners and the assessors enrolled number is $10 million in taxes. And so we're dealing, and we're dealing with about five and a half billion right now, is the current status of the four, four and a half thousand appeals that we certainly have, currently have in the, in the process. So there's, there's a number of issues there, that we'll be trying to manage, and it'll be a, it'll be a stretch. The other, the other operational thing is, that concerns me, is that we've become more exposed to lawsuits, as we operate through with less supervision, less management. Those are just sort of the tolerances we have to make a judgment about, and we're making our best. So, the bottom line is, yes, the assessor has deeds, would like to make a supplemental request, and basically that request would be $340,000. If you come to the end of this process, and, and you see somebody to work with, and you want to consider mitigating some of these issues, I'd appreciate it very much. That's, that's not our whole, obviously, our reduction. And I think a good point was made earlier, there's, you know, in government, there's the inflated, or there's from year to year changes in costs or obligations, and a part of contractual responsibilities, and all the issues that take your budget from one gross number to another gross number. So, the, the reduction, or a budget adjustment, might be a better word for it. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Could you repeat, how much money you'd like, in addition to what you're allocating?
$320,000.
Twenty?
Three twenty.
Targeting-
Three two zero.
Targeting specifically what, again?
That, that specifically would go to mitigate the staggering that I've arranged for supervisors and managers. Excuse me, I apologize.
Hmm. Sorry.
I've got two smaller shirts. I, as I get older, my shirt's been getting smaller, I'm going to loosen this up a little. Yeah, so that's, it would go to, to mitigate that arena. I would be able to hire managers sooner, I'd be able to promote sooner. We have quite a, we have basically seven, primarily seven positions that are staggered throughout the next 12 months, to, in order to get through the year and meet our budget target.
Okay.
Which I thank the CEO for allowing that to be something that they would recommend trusting. That's certainly better than saying, no, we want to see positions, you know, layoffs today. Appreciate that.
Well, thank you also for putting together a mitigation plan for your office, so you can live within the budget allocation that's being recommended. Appreciate that, too.
Thank you.
I know it's not easy on a lot of departments to do that.
And it's everybody's burden, I certainly understand that. Okay.
Any other questions? Keep bringing us some good news, that helps.
Well, there is good news. The, the numbers, I got a report 11 o'clock this morning, so there will be, there'll be more general fund, general purpose revenues in, in your revised budget today.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Goodwin.
Thank you.
Alright, I see that our library director is here, and Supervisor Parks had a question, so if you'd step up, please, Jackie, I appreciate it.
First, let me really apologize, I'm sorry, I had a little emergency out in Camarillo I had to go deal with, and I apologize.
No problem at all, and actually, this could also have been for the CEO, too. I just had a question regarding libraries in general. We have been providing, I guess the way it works is you receive property tax money, it goes to the library commission, which gets allocated to the Ventura County Library system. Correct? And, okay.
Yes.
I'm not seeing it not-
Yeah, okay.
Yes. Okay, good, good, good. And so what we've had now is, the library commission is blocked at providing funds back to the city of Thousand Oaks that they have done-
Yes.
...in the past. So as I see it, the library commission then is supplementing or continuing to keep those funds and not use them for Thousand Oaks services. And that's correct, too, correct?
Right, we're using them for library service throughout the county. And we provide service, of course, to any Thousand Oaks residents who wish to use it too, as do they to us, so.
But, but again, but for the people that live in the unincorporated areas adjacent to, or within the city of Thousand Oaks, if you consider those little islands, they are not getting any funds going to their library as a result of that. And those were decisions, to have those funds go there, that were made many years ago, and so it's a change in policy. And I guess this is where it gets to the CEO, which is now that, as a result of that, we are recommending providing those funds out of our general fund to the city of Thousand Oaks, so they can continue receiving what they've been receiving, and providing the services through their library for those unincorporated area residents that they've been receiving. So, to me, this is a, it's a big shift, you know? This is a considerable amount of money, we're looking at $350,000, I think, this year for the city of Thousand Oaks, that will be coming from our general fund. And I just, you know, if this is going to be the policy that's going to be in place from now, and I think, you know, it's something that should be discussed.
Well, it certainly is not my recommendation that this be the policy that be in place from now on. The reality of the, the recommendation for $350,000 from the general fund, you may recall that, that in the current year, the, the board made the contribution to the city of Thousand Oaks, instead of it coming out of the library system. And also, the board gave direction to my office, as well as city, you know, to the city, basically, to get together and have some dialogue and negotiations about where we would go in the future. Those negotiations have not been completed as of yet. We did terminate our agreement last December, the agreement that requires the board to make a contribution, was in fact, will be terminated, and is terminated effective at the end of this month. So, the fact that I am recommending the $350,000 has more to do with trying to honor the intent of completing negotiations, versus, I certainly am not signaling that we would recommend under any circumstances that unincorporated area revenue go to, to the city, or general fund revenue would go to the city, on any ongoing basis. It's simply to honor the direction of the board and to complete that process.
But it's also, we have to recognize that we do have property tax dollars from residents in the unincorporated area, adjacent, some across the street from the library, that aren't going to the library. I think that will be part of the negotiations, to consider that, but relying on the library commission to continue to provide funds when they are no longer doing that, to me, it seems like we need to look at the whole picture.
If I could speak for a moment? That kind of situation often happens throughout the state, where somebody will be closer to a neighboring library. That's why in general, California subscribes to the idea of universal access, where no matter who you pay taxes to, you can use the local libraries. And certainly, as we move into the same library system with Thousand Oaks, the Southern California Library Cooperative, that, that, that's an expected part of that membership, is that we provide free access to theirs, as we do to Oxnard and Santa Paula and Moore Park, and that they also provide that service for us. It's a fairly accepted concept for all, but just a few libraries.
And I certainly accept that, and I think that should be, you know, libraries should be free, parks should be free, and I, I agree to that. I just, and this all comes down to revenue allocation. And I'm just saying, we need to look at the big picture.
Supervisor Parks, I, I feel like we, we have had significant discussion at, at the board about that, and we had that whole discussion about return to source. And we said, you can't, you can't nail it down and, and constantly do that, you will always have an example, and we can, we can find some examples, where our fire department is providing service, you know, somebody, you know, so you just, you'd be chasing this forever. That's why you have, that's why you embrace the concept. So maybe you get a, you know, maybe in one area it doesn't look the same, in another area, you have more Thousand Oaks people using the county roads, for example. And we, we completely subsidize that because of where they live. So I think we've, at least in that discussion, I certainly had the sense that this board strongly rejected the idea that we're going to try to sit here and go return the source for everything. And so, the board on this discussion of the library was saying, we think the libraries ought to be free, because if, in fact, we take this position and say, you know, money from outside of the city is, is going to, you know, to the city, and we still have negotiations going on, so, then you could make the case that every time somebody from Thousand Oaks walks into one of the county libraries, we should charge them. And that's just, you know, capricious.
And then I would just say, and I guess the question that I'm asking, should 100% of all funds go to a li, to the library commission, and none of them go into the city of Thousand Oaks? So that's where I'm talking about the broader picture. And, and essentially, that's what, you know, by taking all of the library property tax money, using it for the library system, and none of it going to the city of Thousand Oaks, we're in a situation that-
Well, it does go to the city of Thousand Oaks, because there are many Thousand Oaks residents who use our system in the way of our circulation, our books, our outside-of-the-city limits. And I think that we did direct this to the, you know, the CEO, to continue the discussions, to, you know, see what the end result of the policy was, and that this board has said that we would do this for one more year, until we work through those discussions. I mean, you could open up the whole fiscal revenue sharing issues across the county related to who shops at the Thousand Oaks mall and lives in Camarillo. And sales tax sharing, not you. You're going to go to return to source on property tax, let's do it on sales tax.
Right, and, and I guess essentially what was in place was return to source. Do you agree? That's what the library commission received the money, and turned around and gave it back. And that was return to source.
However, for those entities that left the system, like Moore Park, the, the response is that they do not get the unincorporated area taxes-
Right.
...that was associated with return to source.
Right.
And so you had really a discrepancy about how we were treating people who were leaving the system at this point in time, versus the city of Thousand Oaks that left it a long time ago, and were given a certain amount of money. So, the board's direction was to do this for one year, which we did. And we did it for the current year. I am recommending only for us to, for your board, to consider doing this for another year. The amount has gone up, because in the process of looking at this, we have analyzed it and found out that the city of Thousand Oaks was underpaid. So in fact, the general fund has subsidized the library system again, because we did not ask the rest of the libraries to, to share the burden of repaying almost a million dollars to the city of Thousand Oaks. So, at this point in time, we do not have an agreement that requires us to pay anything to the city of Thousand Oaks. I am recommending us to do this for this, this amount of money for this one more time, which represents the amount of money associated with one year.
And then the, the ongoing negotiations will determine what, if any subsidy will continue to force that.
I think that's important, important to point out. Want to remind the, the board, we didn't just say have negotiations about this, we established very clear parameters for those negotiations. And those parameters specifically said, and voted on by this board, I don't remember what the vote was, but it was the majority voted this board. And, and those parameters specifically said, this board does not support return to source, and the board does not support any resolution that will encourage other libraries to engage in actions that will encourage them to leave the system and ask for essentially their share and fragment the system. So, this is, this is, we clearly adopted the policy, saying, you know, we, you know, there's going to have to be a new model, but it's not going to be the old model of, you know, because of that, because it wouldn't be consistent with what we've done with Moore Park, what we, what we would do with any other city that left the system. So, the board has changed the policy that the board adopted, I'm guessing before I got here, but when Frank Schiller was here, and he wrote this, this other one up. The board officially changed that policy, and it's under those parameters, and that's part of why the negotiations have taken a year, because the Thousand Oaks may have, you know, I don't know where we are, but in terms of, you know, the principals trying to negotiate something that's consistent with clear direction from this board, written up by this board. That's been a vote that we've taken, so I just, I just want to be clear on that.
And I, I guess if they were in our library system, funds would be going to their library without the concern that you have now.
That's right. It's, it's their choice to have left the system, and, you know, do you want to encourage the fragmentation of the system, in that situation? I think the board clearly said no.
I want to encourage that we provide funding from the residents who live there and use the library to have some of their funds go to that library. But this is going through more negotiations, I see how it goes.
Well, and I would point out, I mean, we have residents who live right outside of Oxnard, who find it more convenient to go to Oxnard, and we have them all over the system, as do other cities have people closer to our libraries than theirs. It's, it's a very difficult thing to untangle, but we don't pay anyone else for, for those. And I would point out that in truth, coming back to the county is return to source, because those are unincorporated areas, they are not part of the city of Thousand Oaks, so. In truth, we're, sending those tax dollars back to the library system is actually, back to the county itself, is, is return to source at this point. Since they aren't, since those residents are not-
Well, I promise you, see, this is, you know, a lot bigger discussion than what I just wanted to point out, but thank you for that.
Okay, thank you.
The areas are different, too.
Well, I just finished, I hope, to say that when the CEO-
Well, I just finished, I hope, to say that when the CEO recognized that there had been a formula error, we stepped up to the plate and paid the bill. And as a result of that, we're proposing for one more year to pay the bill and then finish the discussions and bring it back for the Board for some, and the City of Thousand Oaks for final resolution.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else from the library, on the library issues? Should get me while I'm here. All right. Thank you, Jackie. Marty, thank you for being here. Okay. Next up, we have child support services. Mr. Tron. And then, we'll have human services. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and CEO Marty Robinson. Initially, I'm going to divide this discussion into three parts. Initially, I want to talk about the budget process and our budget, and a little comment on what I think will happen with our budget at the state level. You'll recall that all our funds flow through the state to us. There are no county funds involved in the child support budget. That's been our historical precedent. We've always said we will live to the means that were given by the state. The state draws down 66% of our budget from the feds, so they contribute 34%, and we live off that state-federal match money. The process this year has been, I think, a very smooth process that has gone very well. And Marty, that is really a compliment to you and your staff. Lyda Lee has done a marvelous job working with us. We thank you for her assistance in this budget process. I think at the state level, you'll see that child support will not be cut in its funding from the state. We're not that much at risk. Last year, we received an additional $500,000 from the state. And in this year's budget process, that earmark had to be reviewed by the legislature, and those funds remain in our budget as part of the base budget. So, we're looking at living off the same amount of money that we received last year. And the reason for that is, if you cut child support funding, you have to cut the associated revenue that we generate. So, it's a loss for the state to cut us because they lose revenue. So, I think we're in good shape. I don't think you'll see a cut in the child support program at the state level. We'll see what happens, but I'm confident that the budget this year will result in a budget that is equal to last year, and we'll live off that money. Secondly, I wanted to update you on the call center. You'll recall, some months ago, we told you that we would begin accepting all the calls from Santa Barbara County. That began March 1st, and we've had three months-plus experience with that. And we track all of our call numbers, abandoned calls, how long it takes to answer a call. There's a number of statistics we gather in the system. And we found that two things in the Santa Barbara call center experience. Number one, our service overall has not deteriorated. We have the same numbers for abandoned calls and call time to answer the call. So, it's been a very positive result in terms of taking over 5,000 calls a month at the call center. It's been so successful that Santa Barbara has seen an increase in their performance on their performance numbers. There's a lot of reasons for that associated with how we answer calls, and I don't want to go into that, but it's been a very positive impact statewide, to such an extent that the state now has asked us, and we have submitted a proposal to them last week, to begin taking over Sonoma County's calls. That would cost about $400,000, and the state would have to come up with that money. We would add four to five new positions and incorporate Sonoma County calls. That would be about another $3,000 to $4,000 calls a month. So, the call center performance is a proven performance that has increased performance in the counties we've taken the calls, and it's, I think it's going to expand to Sonoma, for sure. And then, we'll see where we go from there. We won't do it, well, we wouldn't do it if your Board said not to, that's for sure, but we wouldn't do it if our numbers were to drop, our response times, and if we didn't see positive results in the other county. But I wanted to update you, the call center is performing very well. It is the only call center in the state that is 90% bilingual. We're able to answer all calls, and we update the state system instantly, and that's what generates increased performance. We put in employment information and things like that. So, that's an update on the call center. Lastly, I just wanted to make your Board aware that your child support division received an award from the state. Now, when I appear before you almost every time, indeed every time, I think, I've told you what a wonderful group of people you have at our child support department. I'm very proud of them, and I repeat that every time I'm here. Well, this time, I bring you some results of those comments. We received an award a couple of months ago from the state for being the best-performing large county in the State of California for the 2009 federal fiscal year. That's a rather remarkable achievement. We've never gotten that award before. The large counties that are in that grouping are Alameda, Contra Costa, Fresno, Kern, San Francisco, San Joaquin, Santa Clara, Stanislas, Tulare, and Ventura. And amongst all those counties, we were number one. We've never achieved that award before. And we moved from 14th in the state up to 7th in the state in all counties. Now, if you take the top 10 and we're 7th in that, almost all the counties in that grouping are small counties. I have them, I won't read them to you, but we're the only large county in the top 10 performing counties in the state, and we're the top large county. Indeed, your child support department has a remarkable group of employees. We're able to make headway in answering calls for us and other counties. And call centers, you know, if you deal with them, are very difficult things to manage. My assistant has done a remarkable job with that. And we're now number one in large counties. And one other statistic I'll give you is collections, dollar collections. We're 1% ahead of last year's collections for the fiscal year. In this economy, I did not expect that to happen. I expect the decrease of anywhere from 3% or 4%, 5%, but we're 1% ahead. And the important thing about that number, as you'll recall, over 90% of the money that we collect goes right back out to families. It's not a recovery of governmental money. It's a recovery in that $51 million of money that goes to families. And we've been able to increase our performance in a very difficult economy. So, I wanted to make those comments to you. You've got a great group of people working for you over child support. I'm very proud of them. Our budget remains the same. Happy to answer any questions you have about our budget.
Well, first, congratulations on, it's just a remarkable story. And I recall the days of transition were a little rocky, but you've done an outstanding job, and clearly, you've got a great team that works with you. And to be able to put that kind of return back to the children who need the money helps all of us in our other systems that we operate in this county, so we sure, congratulations. You should be very proud of that.
Thank you. Well, I wanted to deliver that message to you because it's the people back at the department that produced that result.
Sure. Supervisor Bennett.
You know, you work in county government, and you realize Ventura County has some gems of hidden things that are going on where we lead the state. I mean, probably more publicity, but for the average person, not very much about our health care system. But when Stan stands up here and tells us that, you know, no other call center has 90% of their people bilingual, you know, that we're now starting, it sounds like a game of Risk, you know, we're getting more and more counties accumulated here, you know, and, you know, and the Board for, you know, coming to Ventura County to do that and then to get this award. We just have to, we have to remind ourselves how fortunate we are to have so many leading departments here that are leading the state in terms of how they do it, and they're so off the radar screen, so unknown by the average citizen of Ventura County until they need them, until you're a spouse who has gone through a difficult divorce and now is having trouble getting those payments, having trouble, all of a sudden, you know, you really appreciate this, but until you touch it, you don't know, and our job has to be to get that information out there. Congratulations, Stan. Thank you.
Thank you.
And they come back to us if you're not successful in many ways, in different areas of services that we offer, so.
Now, we, there are studies that how much we deflect from the other systems, and that's never figured in our cost effectiveness. We look at dollars collected and dollars spent.
Sure.
But the ancillary effects of positive results are remarkable.
Supervisor, Sarah Johnson?
Yeah, Stan, I just thank your staff, you know, for excellent performance, and this is great when you have an award like this, you know, to be, you know, the recognized amongst the large counties. But I want to thank you again and thank your staff for an excellent job.
Thank you. And the thanks to them is well deserved. They're remarkable.
Okay. Any other questions?
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now, we have our Human Services Agency Board. Anybody need a break? Plowhead here? Okay. Barry's not going to take too long.
I'll be short, no PowerPoint.
No PowerPoint?
So, thank you and good afternoon, Barry Zimmerman of the Human Services Agency. We also commend Stan in his operation because much that he does benefits our programs, and a number of our staff have gone over to his agency, so we take pride in that as well.
All those bilingual people.
Exactly. All right. As you know, our budget is kind of a two-step process, and that's what I'd like to go over a little bit today. We kind of have a county portion, and we have a state portion, and I just wanted to give a brief update on the state portion of what's happening so far that may have ramifications on us in the future here as far as what we do locally. So, much of our budget is contingent on the state and how the state operates there. And as you know, on June 15th, the paper didn't report that the budget passed, so they're still deliberating at this point in time on the budget. To give you an idea, and I've been at the state for several years and prior to that, involved in the state finances and so forth. This year has been one of the most difficult years in working and trying to get information and understand where the state is as far as how their philosophies and policies are related to our programs in particular, as well as the state departments themselves are very much in some disarray and don't, they're really not in the know. And so, the individuals that are actually overseeing and running our programs are also just as unclear on the direction and where the programs are headed. So, that has lent a lot of discord and somewhat uneasiness on exactly what some of the expectations and what we can speculate coming out of Sacramento. But as you know, the Governor did propose a budget that has significant impacts to us, as Paul mentioned, on elimination of CalWorks, reductions in IHSS programs and so forth, and it goes down the list there. As a status update, the Assembly and Senate in their conference respective budget conferences have rejected basically all those and come up with their own proposals. And so, now, currently, we sit in conference committee with those two budgets. It's interesting, the, usually in conferences where you reconcile the differences between those budgets, the budgets are almost identical except for one item that relates to CalWorks. Actually, a restoration that we took a cut last year in CalWorks is the item that's officially in conference. And so, about $380 million is in debate between those two budgets as far as what they've proposed at this time, and that would be a restoration of the cuts that we had a year ago. As you know, we've been taking gradual cuts for the last couple of years in our budgets. However, the committee chairs have clearly stated that the conference committee is considered an open committee this year, meaning that every item that is in the Governor's proposal as well as the items that were in the Assembly and Senate budgets are on the table. So, from that standpoint, still, everything that can be considered and has been considered is still open for debate and discussion. So, with that, that even lends a little bit more uncertainty exactly what is going to happen and where we'll be as it relates to our budget.
Isn't that an oxymoron to say state and more uncertainty? I mean, is it possible to have more uncertainty?
So, well, they're trying hard. So, that's where we're at. And so, what that does for us is that, you know, we've taken our best guess at this point in time where we're at, and, you know, in our program areas, and some are variable in nature. As you know, your Board sent a letter up during the budget hearings in saying that children were important, and we wanted to at least maintain the children's allocation, and so, we wanted to reverse the cuts from prior year. Assembly and Senate agrees with that, however, due to the open nature of the conference committee, that is still at risk associated with that funding stream. But that would be a positive for us if that ultimately gets approved. There's other areas in our programs where we're seeing significant, as you know, caseload increases, but also funding reductions, such as in our MATA-CAL program, may see some reductions and so forth. Food stamps is a little bit different and is funded primarily from a federal objective, and we're seeing increases in that, but a little bit more difficult for us to manage that funding stream. So, it is kind of a balancing act and complex at, right, at the current state in predicting where we'll be. I can tell you what we've done thus far. For the last couple of years, we've been actually constricting and holding pretty tight to our costs, so we would be on a trajectory downward, and that's what we've done relative to our allocations from the state and federal government. So, in anticipation that sooner or later, some of this funding might go away, and we feel that we will be able to keep our current service levels, at least that we have today, even with some of the proposed reductions. Now, if they go into significant cuts beyond what is being contemplated at this point in time, then we'll be in a different situation. But as of it stands now, we're pretty well where we're current-staffed and current service levels, even though we've held those with increasing caseloads over the last number of years, we've absorbed those. However, a few items that I'd just like to say that are key risk areas for us there is obviously the state budget, and that will play out over the there is obviously the, the state budget and that will play out over the summers and, over the summer. And the other thing is also in relation to the federal government. In, in certain bills that are going through and being contemplated right now have some significant impact on our, our funding and in primarily with FMAP and with the, what is known as FMAP or the Enhanced Medicaid Funding that the federal government provided the state is only good through December 31st and it was with anticipation that the, the state as well as us anticipated that they would extend that funding for six more months. However, the most recent bill in the Senate has, does not have that in there and it does not have an extension of FMAP and is held up in the, in the Senate under debate. So without that, that would then impact how we get enhanced funding with IHSS, which is a direct aid program which benefits us to about for a six-month period, about a million dollars that would be a impact to us. So those are some areas of concern. And then the last area of concern is that we have similar to last year, the, the governor's blue pencil activities also took significant reductions in our programs as soon as they did come to some kind of reconciliation of the budget that, that had significant reductions to childrens. And so that is another threat area that we'll be watching and, and it can't necessarily rest once the budget is passed. The continual understanding and communication of the budget and its importance will have to go until the, the governor ultimately signs it. So that's a really quick overview and it kind of in summary, what is that meaning is that, is that there are some significant areas of funding risk due to state and federal funding that may not materialize in, in the state budget and, and even in the federal budget that has a direct impact to us. Now, the state budget as a whole, watching it is, is fairly important there. Over 70% of the state budget goes to local government or school systems, 50% plus to schools and, and about another 20 or so goes to local governments in their operations. So as they do not come to decisions or as they do come to decisions on making up the $20 billion, there, there is more than likely some kind of direct impact associated with us there. The, the other strategies associated with it really are complicated as, as pointed out, that Paul pointed out, realignment, we're participating in those activities and those discussions right now, that it appears there are going to be a new attempt to do a new strategy around realignment, which, which not only impacts our programs, but mental health and behavioral health and others, probation, all participate in realignment activities and, and programs. So there are significant threats associated with where the future lies, with how, how we're going to tackle these programs and, and finance them from here on out. So that was kind of my, my overview quickly on, on where we're at and what, what the future holds.
Just to remind us, a significant part of what we do is still at great risk and unknown.
Uncertain.
Uncertain. Barry mentioned the Senate Democrat, the multi-year government restructuring proposal has a total shift of CalWorks childcare to counties.
Yeah.
100% shift of the entire CalWorks childcare to counties is one of the proposals under a realignment remodel, so it's.
Yeah, most of the realignment is, is conditioned to shift the cost to the local level and, and maintain it with some kind of whatever they say is revenue source to the local government.
Right. And we can always guarantee, get guarantees on those long-term revenue sources, you know, because we haven't had any experience with cutting them, right?
Just like when they close the state hospitals and they promise they would provide all the funding for the locals.
Right. So, yeah, so that's the strategy we're seeing mostly is the shift of responsibility to the local level.
So, something we have to be tenaciously involved in what happens in the discussions in the conference committee. Any other questions for Mr. Zimmerman on this? Any thoughts?
Thank you for the good news.
Yeah. Just remind.
You're doing important work. You gotta, I mean, you and your department have to stay after this. You know, it must be a difficult place to not get discouraged sometimes.
It's a challenge every day.
But it is, you've got to get inspired by the work that, you know, you don't have to get, you already are, but it has to inspire you to get to do the work that you get to.
Absolutely. We, we enjoy it and a great tremendous staff out there doing tremendous jobs that, that they don't get a lot of public, public exposure for, but they're doing a tremendous job under a workload that's very heavy and not, and willingly to, to sacrifice so much time and effort there. Appreciate the board's support and your understanding of the programs and the importance that they have in the community. Thank you.
You know, I want to mention, mention something to the board just to, just to try to put it in perspective. A year ago, we had our emancipated youth program as these kids were emancipating out. We had a private contractor doing that and the private contractor came up with six host homes for emancipated youth last year. And we have about 35 or 40 emancipated youth come out every year, six host homes. Now, the department's already burdened, huge workload as Barry said, but they brought that back in, terminated our contract, brought it back in. We have 35 host homes for emancipated youth this year. Now, that's, that's 30 kids that have a much better chance of having their lives saved right at a critical time, but it was an extra workload that they added on. They took the revenue back, of course, from the contract, but that meant people had to scramble more. And that's what, you just, I just think you have to feel so good about that, that you gotta, you gotta live and, and feed off of that as much as you possibly can in, in your important work.
Thank you for recognizing this.
Supervisor Bennett?
Madam Chair, and Barry, again, thank your staff and your good work too that you do. And there's a lot of things that you do that doesn't come out in the paper that people don't see, but you're doing an excellent, excellent job and commend your staff for that too.
Thank you.
I think also, based on some other comments that we heard today, I, I think I have to, to not only compliment the interest in serving the community and always bringing it back to the agency to figure out the best way to serve the community, but the fact that you've been extraordinarily fiscally responsible in terms of trying to figure out in this incredibly shifting environment, but how to live within the means that we have and are able to share with you. And I think you've done an excellent job from the moment you walked into that agency, trying to figure out what was the balance of the county budget, what was the net cost and how was it being used and were you maximizing matches and those kinds of things? So I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. That, that completes our list of those agencies that wish to speak to the board unless someone has appeared now who's changed their mind and wishes to speak to the board. I don't see anyone running up here. As mentioned, we have a public hearing that will start at 6 o'clock. Anything else?
Yes, Madam Chair, I just wanted to make a few comments after, after some of the presentations that we've heard here this afternoon. As you saw, there were very, very few presentations. There are a lot of managers out there figuring out how to manage their budget in these extraordinarily difficult times. I think it's a little premature to get very exuberant about a turn in the economy, particularly as it relates to the fact that we have costs that we absolutely know are coming. We have, you know, over a $20 million bill that's going to come due next year at this time. And so our office has a very different philosophy about bridging people. You've heard the district attorney and he's really asking for a bridge to better times. And I'm not sure the better times are close enough that you can really entertain that. What we have done with the sheriff and what we have done in the past is we said, we're going to give you a bridge to help you manage to, to in fact, live within your means and these are the means that we have. And what, one of the things that we shared with you already is that we've been a little exuberant or certainly optimistic about the 172 revenue that we've continued to leave into those budgets, or that hole would be bigger. You're being asked to subsidize the, the district attorney at another half a million dollars at a minimum, I think, that, that he's asking for. I think that given the times that we're in, the real question is if you subsidize it at a half a million, another, another half a million dollars, what's, what is it going to be next year? And as we've mentioned before, almost all new revenue have gone to public safety and more than the new revenue has actually gone to public safety, which then means that all the other departments out there are trying to figure out a way to balance their budgets and still meet the service needs and the service demands that are upon them. And when they make savings, the result is, is that we're, have greater capacity and that capacity is now going to public safety. I think the sheriff has recognized that that is one of the issues and we're, and he's certainly trying to find a balance of what his needs are and what he requested, as well as all the other departments out there. So I just think that it's a little premature to be thinking that we can assist departments to not meet the targets that we've set. And I think that you are setting yourself up for additional expenses in the following year. So, those are my comments and any other comments from board members? Yes.
I do and I jumped over here to this other, other thought. I'll hold it for 6 o'clock.
Okay. We'll be back at 6 o'clock then for the public hearing and continue the discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yes.
I do know. Our CEO suggested that the district attorney was asking for a half a million dollars. I think the district attorney is asking for $700,000. You're at 6 and he's asking for 1.3.
Right, sorry, I thought he was at 1.1. See, I'm always.
Exactly. You're at 6 and he's at, he's at, yeah, 1.3.
Right.
And the district attorney's budget, I just want to be clear here, with, with the 6 that the CEO is recommending, that's just about a $2 million increase in the district attorney's budget?
Yes, I believe so. I think I can just take one second here and just look those numbers up.
I think it's 1.3, so it goes to 2.
His overall budget right now is projected, the appropriations by 1.35, so it'd be 1.9, almost $2 million increase in appropriations. And general fund contribution is, would go from a $518,000 increase to a 1.1 million dollar increase in general fund contribution.
With the CEO's recommendation.
That's correct, with the CEO recommendation.
So that's the difference of 700,000. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions? All righty, we'll see you back here at 6. Thank you all.
Thank you all. Okay, good evening, and welcome to the Board of Supervisors. Welcome to your boardroom. It is June 21, and this is to open the public hearing for testimony on proceedings regarding the board's proposed budget for fiscal year 2010-11. And before we begin hearing from the public, we're going to have a presentation from our CEO, a brief presentation from our CEO, Mr. Durst.
Yeah, I'm just going to have Mr. Durst come up and go over some of the slides, a quick review of a few of the slides, and then move on.
Sure, we set the table, so to speak, for the evening. Order of events, we're up to the 6:00 PM budget hearings, and then budget deliberations after that point, and budget adoption within the next 14 days. Key budget data, $1.69 billion, $879 million in the general fund, up 1.9%. General purpose revenue is up 1.4%. Total FTEs down 46 from last year's adopted budget. Increase in secured property taxes, we're estimating $2.5 million. Of that, we're recommending going $744,000 to replenish contingency up to a recommended $2 million amount. Increase the sheriff appropriations by 1.155 million, and increase the district attorney appropriations by $600,000. These are the remaindering post-adjustments, post-preliminary adjustments, offset by revenues. Continuity adjustments, as we went over this morning. General fund debt service, the 2.2. And then our capital needs, as we outlined this morning, relative to ongoing capital needs and the stressors we're anticipating in the future. Potential state budget impacts, probably a bigger stressor than our capital needs. And Barry went over a number of those with your board earlier regarding social services specifically, but we also see a lot of that same stress in the healthcare area.
Well, and with our law enforcement representatives here tonight, we have certainly stressors you're familiar with, with push-down of prisoners to our local county jails projected, and transfer juvenile parole release to probation.
A lot more work at the local level. And again, part of the state's attitude, or one of their proposals, is full realignment of a lot of services down to the local level. Again, a general fund post-preliminary use of designation of $2.75 million in the upcoming budget year. And our public safety contribution, general purpose revenue on the left in blue, general purpose revenue increase of $4.3 million, what your board has discretion over, and increase in public safety contribution of $6.5 million.
Paul, could you go back?
Sure.
Just want to be clear for the public, so what you're saying is our revenue went up by 4.3 million, but we increased our contribution of public safety by 6.5 by finding other sources?
That's correct. And then the ordinance, 488 budget overage, $4.4 million going into our recommended contribution for this upcoming budget year is $4.4 million over our calculated 488 requirement. And then our net cost pie chart, and the conclusion that we outlined this morning or this afternoon earlier, I think the last two items, estate issues and retirement contributions, as your board is aware, that retirement contributions will be continuing to increase over the next several years, and not only continuing to increase, but increase significantly across the board from our... We're expecting, just to give you a round number, about a $25 million increase in 11-12, based on the information we have so far. So when we're talking about the subsequent year's budget increasing, we're talking about big dollars, a $25 million increase on top of the 20-plus million dollar increase we saw in this last year. So it's significant from our standpoint. And that kind of resets the table for your board for the deliberations this evening. Are there any questions? I'd be more than happy to try.
Any questions?
I just have one, and I appreciate the district attorney talked about it earlier today in his testimony, and I just didn't hold on to the percentage. The Prop 172 funding for the district attorney dropped by how much? Went from what to what in this past year?
This year, our budget was about $54 million overall for Prop 172. We're looking at about between $48 and $49 million for this year. So we're talking between, well, maybe between 49 and 50, in that range. We're talking between $5, $6 million below what we had projected. For next year, we're projecting, again, back at the $54 million. It's relatively optimistic, but, you know, based on some of the information we've seen, not way out there, but we do recognize that it's, like I said, optimistic.
And we picked up that deficit for public safety this year?
Yes, we did.
In one city.
Leaving the county as a whole, correct, with other shortages.
But what of the $54 million, the district attorney is, how much does he get in?
I'm not sure, about 10%, Frank?
About 12, 11.
11 or 12% of that.
Six, seven million.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. That sets the table, as you say. Board members, are there any preliminary comments you'd like to make, any public comments at this time? No? Okay. All right, then, at this time, and as we have comments from the public, there are also managers here and folks to answer any questions the board may have on issues raised by folks in the public who wish to speak to us. So I'll start with the public hearing on this, and again, thank those of you from the public who've come to speak, and let you know you're certainly welcome. And the first one up will be Chief Ken Corney.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm here this evening to speak in support of maintaining the current revenue structure with the budget of the district attorney's office. And as you know, the criminal justice system is just that, it's a system. And we're all part of it, and our officers can go out and arrest as many bad guys as we can pull in, but if we can't get them successfully prosecuted, it's troubling for us. One of the indicators that's going on this year is of our misdemeanor crimes, thefts and thefts from a shopless and thefts from unlocked cars are up over 50% already. I think a lot of that is a result of the unsupervised parole releases that's going on, and we don't have any parole time to sentence these people to, so it's going to take prosecution by the DA's office to make sure these people are held accountable and not continually victimizing our community. And it's important to recognize that it doesn't happen like it happens on TV in an hour with commercials, you know? It takes much longer to prosecute a case, and we are kind of at the will of the defense end of it, and sometimes there's delays and there's complications, and it takes a lot of time, a lot of resources, not only prosecute misdemeanor crimes, not to mention felony crimes, gang violence, things like that. So I'd urge you to reconsider and consider fully funding the district attorney's office in support, and help support local law enforcement. Thank you.
Mr. Corney? Yeah, Chief, could I just ask you just a couple of quick questions? I appreciate your testimony tonight and the fact that it's a system and your communication earlier. Your budget, are you seeing a dollar increase or dollar decrease in the police department's budget at the city at this point?
We're, you know, Ventura's in very drastic times right now. We're seeing a significant reduction in our budget.
In other words, from last year's budget, an actual dollar decrease from last year's budget?
Correct.
Okay. Percentage-wise, do you know what that is?
About 8%.
Okay. And I just want to make sure that you're aware, as you hear, that we have, our general fund revenues are going up about 1.4%.
Right.
I want to make sure you're aware that the district attorney's budget is going up at 5%. So when you refer to cuts, at least when we were talking before, it's a cut from what he needs to, you know, for all his growth in his expenses, but it is a 5% increase.
Yeah, I understand that, and I think, you know, given our reductions, it's even more important for us to be able to be successful with the criminals we can arrest and to see the resources there when we need them.
Great, okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Understanding, you know, all the work your officers go through to arrest, to do, and everything else, what do you see if we have some reduction in the DA's office? What are you expecting to happen?
Well, again, ultimately, you need accountability for people committing criminal acts in your community, and when they're not successfully, you know, able to be prosecuted and held accountable, they're more apt to continue their criminal behavior. Just unsupervised release, they're career criminals. Their business is victimizing our members of our community and committing crimes, and that's what most of them do for a living. And the longer they stay out of being incarcerated, the more crimes are going to be perpetrated in your community.
So even, and so when you look at your own budget, then is your budget getting constrained and strapped by not being able to prosecute these people, just adding more burden on top of your own budget, having to find these people, rearrest these people, and that kind of thing at the same time, or what?
Absolutely, right. If the people we do catch and we put away don't get successfully prosecuted and they're out without probation terms, or, you know, or they just get out, and they know how to kind of get through the system without being prosecuted, it's just going to add to being... When you're successful as a criminal, you continue to commit crimes.
Because it also is the issue, somebody had said to me, one city manager, said, "We got to be careful how far we allow some cuts to go," because people will get to the understanding, know something's an infraction versus a whatever, and they'll start to play the game and it gets out. Is that, would you agree in that? Do the criminals know that?
Right. I mean, there's word of mouth among criminals, for sure, and they, you know, I think they communicate in how to be successful and where the heat is, so to speak. The holes in the system, they find them.
Right, okay, thanks.
Chief, so it becomes a merry-go-round then if you arrest and then the DA can't, you know, take care of them, right? So it goes right back round and round with the criminals, so there's not the continuity to put those criminals away, is that...
Correct. As I said, it's a system, and we provide the first frontline enforcement and arrests, but it really has to move through the system in order for our result to work and to pay dividends for our community.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comment.
Didn't know you were going to get grilled so much, did you?
Chief John Krombeck.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board of Supervisors, Ms. Robinson. I'm getting used to Ken Corney now stealing all my thunder. He's been the chief inventor for 20 minutes, and I don't even know why I showed up. I'm here as well to speak on behalf of the district attorney's budget and agree with Chief Corney's comments. If you recall, two years ago, I came and made a presentation before you at your Moore Park meeting and talked about the benefits of community-based prosecution. The benefit of a local prosecutor addressing issues of quality of life before they reach a threshold where it becomes a serious criminal issue. And this goes to the philosophy of community policing and problem solving. These are some of the things that I see potentially deteriorating if the district attorney is not able to focus those efforts on that level of prosecution. It's caused to then evaluate and prioritize and oftentimes triage, and so then the focus becomes on the more serious level offenses, and so the criminal element that Chief Corney talked about doesn't see a consequence with other types of dysfunctional, lower-level criminal behavior. Also, I know that you're all familiar, and you've heard me say many times, that we cannot arrest our way out of our youth violence and gang problems. And while we in Oxnard are very heavily invested in prevention intervention strategies, a key component is to have a strong suppression strategy. But what really shores the strength of that suppression strategy is a strong prosecution element. In our Peace Works project that's modeled after Boston's ceasefire, we identify key criminal offenders, we bring them in, and we, along with other elements of the justice system, along with community-based organizations and service providers, provide them with an opportunity, a program that can affect and change their lives. And so while we provide the stick, as we move down the line of the presentation comes the carrot and the opportunity to change. Whatever their motivation is, a lot of it is to say, "Look at us and say, 'I'm tired of dealing with them,'" and so they will then take the family strengthening services and other opportunities we provide them, job training and what have you, to help them become functional contributing parts of the community. There are those who just don't get it. That, we then put the full weight of the law upon them in terms of enforcement and suppression strategies. Again, I want to reemphasize the strength of strong prosecution so that they understand that there is an or else to their behavior. Either get with the program, or else, "We're going to come get you, you're going to be prosecuted." So while we, again, are heavily invested on the front end, we do have to have that support. And so with that, I just, I appreciate your leadership, I sympathize with the tough decisions you have to make here this evening, and would ask you to strongly consider our DA's request and fund it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Also, Chief, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
You also, like everybody else, budgets are tough. I know you guys put a sales tax in to help some of that, but it's still not enough, right? The idea that you have your own gang injunction in your city, and that means you're partnering strongly with the DA on these kind of issues. And so the continuation, because I guess I look at it from the standpoint of trying to balance, I mean, we have budget constraints, there's no question about it, but I guess our budget constraints have a major effect on what happens in your cities, as we saw from others, Chief. So how, you see it, the idea that a little bit of money here possibly is saving everybody money and the opportunity to put away hopefully some people that could be stealing or physically hurting or killing other people, that if we don't move down that and keep that relationship and enough money to keep that funding going, is that basically where you're going to see it?
Yes, Supervisor, that's primarily why I'm here. In Oxnard, we pay the county for a gang injunction prosecutor, and we pay the county for a gang violence suppression prosecutor. That's how heavily invested we are in the issues that we have to address to ensure that those cases are addressed. In terms of the greater good, countywide, our criminals do not know boundaries. And while they may be aggressively sought and dealt with in Oxnard, if they venture out, it may not be the same result. And so to ensure, I guess, some continuity in that prosecution, a countywide effort, and again, I may be one of the only police chiefs in California that stood before my governing body and told them, "If they can't fund certain recreation programs, then don't fund my programs." But in this case, this is, and I do, I understand the difficult decisions you have to make and the scarce dollars. We're dealing with the same issues in Oxnard. It goes to, I guess, the structure, the fundamental structure of what we're trying to accomplish is not just siloing it out, but to understand that in, to look at it from an elevated perspective, you do have that component that is necessary for the rest of it to work. So while we try to front-end invest, there are those that simply are not going to get it, and we need to be able to deal with them. As Chief Corney mentioned, if they do have sanctions such as probation... As Chief Corny mentioned, if they do have sanctions such as probation, then we can compel them maybe from, to get them back on the front end. So it is, it is a system, but we do need that component.
Right. And without that, everybody runs the risk in this county. Okay, thanks.
Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you. You did a great job grilling Chief Corny, though.
Supervisor Zergosa? Yeah, Chief Kromback, the question I was going to ask is, what does it cost to prepare a case before you bring it over to the DA's office for any criminal that you arrest, you know, and just a rough?
Supervisors, I really haven't done that analysis. Some are tremendously expensive when it comes to major crimes, felony crimes. Some, however, you know, when we talk about graffiti vandalism and those issues that impact quality of life, may not reach a threshold where you would say that's an expensive preparation for prosecution, but it's the impact of victimization, the impact it has on the community, the quality of life in that community. And so to see that come around and be prosecuted and dealt with, I couldn't quantify it.
But to prep a case and hand it over to the DA and he doesn't have enough staff to take care of it, then we lose that, all that cost and-
Then we have a broken wheel.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other public members who wish to speak to the board on any part of our budget? I don't have any other cards submitted or names listed. Okay, then.
Want to close the public hearing?
I will close the public hearing and we'll bring it to the board for-
Madam Chair?
Yeah, wait a minute. We do deliberations before. Before deliberations begin, adopt. Okay. Okay, if you say so. Okay, we're not closing the public hearing. We'll leave it open for anyone who wishes to jump up and say, "But."
Madam Chair.
Okay, but it is to the supervisors. Yes, Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you. First, I appreciate the testimony of the two chiefs, one's already gone. And I don't think there's any question that the statement of, "If you can't prosecute them, you've got a problem." It's a system and all the components have to work. I think the fundamental question that faces us as a board is, is a five percent increase in the district attorney's budget this year enough to hold the system together, to hold his unit together? That's the question that we have, not, you know, if we were talking about a 15% or 20% cut and somebody was saying, you know, "You've got the system." And that's the argument that the district attorney has been making, is that five percent is not enough to be able to move the system forward. Basically, with the general fund increase, general fund revenues that we have, we've given most of those to public safety, as we saw on the chart. With a 1.4% general fund increase and a 5% district attorney increase, we have some questions in terms of sustainability, et cetera. So the district attorney is saying he needs 1.3 million. The CEO has allocated an extra 600 million, thousand, right? 600,000. And, you know, so that's where we are with our budget at this point in time. There's a $700,000 gap. If the board doesn't feel, if we don't feel that the 5% increase is not enough and we want to give them more, we have to identify sort of where that comes from in terms of doing that. And so the first thing I'd just like to point out is that if we have that money come from the general fund, we grow the base again for next year as this moves forward. And what we have, and, you know, from the testimony of the district attorney, et cetera, is we have a dip in Prop 172 that has caused a problem. And I know the district attorney is more optimistic than Paul Dursey in terms of 172 projections going forward and looking at that. So what I'm trying to do is figure out how to say, okay, there is, as I've spent considerable time with the district attorney's budget and positions, et cetera, and what I believe I've seen is that there is an agreement on the positions but a disagreement on the amount. Mr. Dursey thinks that the district attorney can cover those positions that cost $823,000, thinks that they can be covered with about $600,000 because of other attrition, et cetera, that would take place in the district attorney's budget over the course of the year. And then there are three positions and, pardon me, board members probably, I don't have a good way to get that up on the slide, but there are two attorney positions and then one other attorney assistant position, I guess I want to say, management assistant position, right? The two attorney positions that the district attorney is probably most focused on in terms of hiring. If we increase funding over the 600,000 that the district attorney, I mean, that the CEO is recommending, and we brought in the ability to get to those two attorney positions, we would have at least, we would have more attorneys, we would have the maximum number of attorneys that we've had for years here, right? Now, I know the district attorney would say, "Well, some of those are restricted and some are not." But overall, we would have more attorneys than we had last year at this point in time, if we went to do that. So I certainly think you could make the case that we're not, that that's going to be pretty, that's going to be a pretty similar, at least, to our current system and not a complete erosion or gutting of the positions. So if I could, I have district attorney budget, I just have a couple, two PowerPoints, and maybe this will help make it, make my point a little bit more clear. So could we come up with a district attorney budget, if I could, please? So our fundamental problem is we have this kind of situation that's been happening, it's been happening a number of years, where our general fund revenue is not growing as fast as the increase that we're giving to public safety budgets. This time in particular, it's the district attorney's budget. So if we just say, "We're going to keep doing that," we're not being realistic, we have to come up with something sustainable. At the same time, we have, so if we could go to the next slide, please. So we have to try to identify an ongoing base that is sustainable by the general fund. And at the same time, if it's possible, try to give the district attorney the positions that the district attorney is looking for. And what I propose is a funding amount, there's a $700,000 gap. I propose 400,000 more than what the CEO is proposing at this point in time, but that that be Prop 172 bridge funding. And specifically, what I'm suggesting is that the minute Prop 172 comes in over projections, that money is used to fund this 400,000 that we're putting into the district attorney's budget. Allows the district attorney to move forward with those two attorneys because they're going to be hired at a lower price. Hopefully, the district attorney's right and Prop 172 does come in better than what we've projected. And it keeps the general fund from actually growing, but it gives the assurance that it can, you know, that the hiring can take place and we can move forward from this point in time. So that's the, that's the proposal that I have, and the question is, where's the money come from? And it's this bridge funding, and I would offer to you, we don't know for sure that the 172 funding is going to come in. And so we have this issue of the debt service that we talked about earlier, and my thoughts are that we, we take that debt service and we, and this is sort of a later motion I would do, we do some kind of set aside so that we can see how bad things are going to be next fall. Because by next fall, we'll have a pretty good idea of both what Sacramento has done and whether this May increase in 172 funding holds and all of that. And so I would put that, I would hold that debt service. What my goal would be is in the fall, pour all that right back into debt service because we do have ongoing debt service needs, and we've got to be careful with that. But I'd set it, I'd hold it at this point in time for that. It's not everything the district attorney is asking for, but I think it's a good faith offer to try to get those two attorney positions because those are the ones that are most important. But also, with an agreement, I mean, I shouldn't say an agreement, with the concept of the board, that that's it. Those are the positions, and we think the district attorney's got to find ways to provide the services with those positions. And if things don't get better, you know, we, you know, and we won't be able to keep growing general fund contributions faster than revenues. But I think it, that's, so that's my proposal, and I'm going to ask county council, you said, "We used to do straw votes on this. Is this the time for me to make it as a motion and a proposal for a straw vote?"
We have to first take, recommend a budget adjustments to adopt Exhibit A, and then we can start then.
Okay. But when we do that, then it's straw vote time, is that right? Okay?
Yes. And you should certainly verify with the CEO's office that what you proposed is something that they can do.
You mean physically do, right?
Yeah.
All right. The CEO said yes.
I think I understand what you're attempting to do. Yes, we can do that, but we need to adopt this to the foundation that creates, that creates the two-point something that you're talking about.
Uh-huh. Right.
Okay. So, board members, we have to adopt Exhibit A, which you all received.
Do you want to do that before we have comments?
Yes. Because this has been the foundation that talks about the phrase, the fund, phrase where the debt financing is.
This creates all the adjustments that your board has been, you know, we talked about before. It adjusts-
Does this include that 3.1 million for the homeless thing and everything? Is that in there or what?
The 3.1 was in the preliminary budget. These are the differences between the preliminary budget and the post-preliminary budget. These are just all the adjustments. The 2.9 million that was up on the screen before, 2.5 of that, 2.9 is due to increase in property tax revenue, and the other $400,000 revenue offset primarily in the Human Services Agency.
It's actions taken by your board subsequent to going to press on the preliminary budget, basically.
So these are those things that Supervisor Parks has to be called out, changes in the preliminary budget.
Right. So is there a motion to adopt Exhibit A?
Sure, I'll make the motion.
There's a motion, a second by Supervisor Zergosa. So we'll vote on this motion and then we can do all the strawing thing. All right. All right, now we have foundation, so now.
Sure. Yeah. And so, yeah, so just to summarize what I was basically saying, is the, it's $400,000 addition, but it'd be identified as Prop 172 bridge funding. So the goal is, as soon as possible this year, if it has to carry over to next year, but whenever we get this Prop 172 coming back, we pull this $400,000 back. With a specific idea of trying to fund the positions that, that the CEO thinks can be funded at 600,000 and the district attorney identifies as 823,000, somewhere in between that, if you do 400,000, you cover that gap and also allow the two attorney positions. And then that would be, in my mind, sort of the maximum number of district attorney investigators and attorneys that could be supported, and that's not all with general fund, that's with restored 172 funding down the road. So that's basically the conclusion.
Well, I appreciate you trying to find some solutions. That's great. I think that's key. One of the things I think this board has always done is said that public safety is number one and we want to be focused on that. I appreciate the chiefs coming and talking about the system that we have, and I think that's very, very important because these different cities and even our own sheriff's department could spend a whole lot of time, if we don't have the right ability to prosecute and do the right things, it's going to be very difficult for us. So I think that we need to make sure that we can do whatever we can, and I appreciate Stevie coming up with some opportunities. And I think we have to be careful of our general fund, and I think that's important. And if we do see a 172 increase, that's a good opportunity so the general fund isn't affected long-term. And I think the DA would say, "That's fine. I'll wait for the 172 to come back so I'm not hurt." One of the things, though, I want to be careful that we're talking about 400,000, we're talking, we're still 300,000 or 400,000 off. I still believe there's some needs that are out there, but I don't want to affect the general fund anymore. I think it's important. One of the things that I would like to do is to add the opportunity is this, because all of us believe, I think, I don't think I'm speaking out of turn, that we all believe in public safety, we all support it, and we know that the DA is important. But one of the things I'd like to say is, because we haven't had personally an issue to our own budgets, but I have, you know, done some examination, our budgets personally, we do a very good job, all these supervisors do a very good job of managing their budgets, and every year, we turn back an awful lot of money. I would propose that we take a 5% cut in our own budgets, which still would leave everybody enough money to manage their own budget. And with that, it puts the CEO in a position that she is not going into general fund money that's already there. We take a 5% cut, which works out to about $182,000, and add it to your 400,000. And that would bring us up to about $582,000. At the same time, it doesn't affect the overall budget, which is shifting that ability because, again, these supervisors, all the years I've been here, do a tremendous job in managing their budget and not overspending. And I think at this, years I've looked at, we're averaging almost 10% under budget. And at that point, I wouldn't want to go right to the edge, so, you know, but we should also feel some of the same pain that everybody else has to and do that. So my proposal, we take what Steve, Supervisor Bennett said, and then also add the opportunity to take a little bit out of our own budget, and because we believe in public safety, also help the DA in that situation and give him what he needs, at the same time protecting the CEO's requirement that I don't want, I want to protect my general fund. Because, again, we should be protecting that general fund. I don't believe this is a rainy day. I believe it's just a cloudy day. I think the CEO and everybody else should tell you, I remember 1980, or 2002, right, Marty? So those were, those were getting to some rainy days, right? 2001, 2002? Those were very difficult days, but they weren't even downpours. And we should be very careful that we're not taking too much. And I know that we've given some money, one-time money, to other things, and I believe that we could do that, at the same time, giving the chiefs what they need and our sheriff what he needs by having a DA that is not fully funded. We're still going to be short hundreds of thousands of dollars, but in the same light, give them what they need to ensure that when Oxnard spends a whole lot, like Supervisor Zergosa's talking, to prosecute, I mean, to arrest and to do, the DA has the ability to put these people away and protect the people of Oxnard, protect the people of Ventura and all the people of the county. And I think it's important because I've seen the cities, you have two DAs or whatever you're talking about in your city, I know, and Thousand Oaks has one. CME and Moore Park have decided it's that important to do it. We need to make sure that we can do the right thing, and I believe the DA's office is where we have to continue to go down that path. We can't change. But we're not going to have all the money we need, there's no question. We don't have all the money we need, and we're going to struggle with that. So that would be my proposal to add to what you're doing because I do want to protect what the CEO said is that general fund money. So we find it, we're transferring money places. So my proposal would be to add what you have, plus if we could take a 5% cut in our own budgets, if possible.
Supervisor?
Are we talking a one-time from our budget?
One-time, fine.
But I'm not sure, because I would probably have to look at it, but I-
We hear about your budget a lot.
Don't be looking at my budget. But I, you know, I support the supervisor's concept. I think it's important that we look at the criminal system, as the two chiefs mentioned, you know, and I'm sure the other chiefs also support that. It's extremely important, you know, that we provide the public safety for the community. It's important to all of us, you know, and I know I've worked with the Chief Kromback in Oxnard when we put together the gang injunction and also the numerous other projects that we put together in Oxnard. We reduced, what was it, 60% chief or something, of crime in Oxnard because of those efforts. So I think I support the additional $400,000 and the bridge funding, and as soon as, hopefully maybe the 172 dollars come up so we can pay the general fund back. And Supervisor, I want to look at my budget, how much do I have in there? So if it's a one-time, you know, I would-
Well, theoretically, it wouldn't be one-time. That's the point. Is it, I mean, you're talking about ongoing-
Well, it could be ongoing just so we protect the general fund. Because I'm looking, this is consistent, we were consistent-
Year after year, so.
The other thing that I'd like to ask, and maybe if we don't approve that particular part of it, can we look at it, you know, here in a month or so or whatever, and maybe adjust accordingly if that's the case?
I'm sure Mr. Dursey could tell us where- I'm sure Mr. Durschik can tell us where...
Well, it's in the budget book.
It's right here.
185 is a good number. Now, we don't have breakout of each individual supervisor, but we generally can move money around, it's only one budget unit.
Yes, one budget unit, I think we are under 9.9 or 10.1% as, as a whole, altogether.
That could very well be, and, and, we don't have that specific information.
No.
But clearly, to respond to Supervisor Zaragosa's comments, we can come back at any time, after your board adopts the budget, we can come back two months, three months, mid-year, anytime we want to make an adjustment relative to this, we can do that.
Which we will do, in October, with state...
Yeah, we're going to do automatic, but I was just saying that we would do that, so we know what the DA would have, we do that now with on top of Supervisor Bennett's.
And we can do that in October, for the DA also.
Madam Chair, I just, I'd like to respond to Supervisor Forrest's comments, and I guess the fundamental question I ask is, is that, is that what's essential for the district attorney to be able to carry out the core mission? If we're funding, and so I'm going to pull up a different set of PowerPoint slides, it's called District Attorney PowerPoint 1, that's the one we did earlier today, right? So could I have District Attorney PowerPoint 1, please? It'll be here. The, the point I'm going to make while the, while the slide is coming up is, is that essential to the core mission of the district attorney when we're giving the district attorney all the attorneys that he's had in the past? We're funding all of his attorneys from past, past year, could we go to Slide 2, please? Right? So, there you see, in terms of net attorneys, 2010, right? If this 400,000 gives the district attorney all the attorneys that he had, and it also, if you see there, 43 DA investigators last, in 2009, 2010, and this funds the 43 DA investigators. I think that's what, that's, that's, those are the two that form the core mission of the district attorney, those are our all-time highs for the district attorney. I, I, I just think that if we were going to do something like you're talking about, I see the sheriff has actually cut positions this year by comparison. I, I'm not prepared at all to say beyond those two attorney positions that we should go any further with the district attorney, until I looked at lots of other places where I would, would go with those needs. So, I, I wouldn't be supportive of, of doing that at all, because I think we have met the minimum standards for the district attorney at, at this point in time.
Can I ask the district attorney to come up?
Sure.
As I look at this chart, we're talking about attorneys and that kind of stuff, it looks like it's just been an increase in revenue-restricted attorneys, is that...
Right, actually, at one time, we had 105 attorneys back in 2002, so the, the 92 that are referenced there is the number of FPE allocations we have today.
Right.
I think when the one snapshot was taken, we, the most recent look at it, we have a couple of vacancies that we desperately will need to fill.
Right, but we talk about having more attorneys, or we're equal to the most we've ever had.
No, we have, we had a great deal more attorneys in early 2002, I know that's a long, that's a long time ago.
I misspoke, I mean, in the last five years.
Yeah, in the last five years.
To go back to the days of 4088 and 100 attorneys.
Yeah, and the night, and the increase, the increase to attorneys that are not general fund increase, because general fund attorneys have gone down, our, our increases have been due to the revenues that we've, we've gotten aside.
Yeah, because last year you had 28, now it says 24. So, those are restricted, we can't do, but general, general attorneys that help, you know, Chief Crumbak and Ventura and all this, those attorneys have gone down.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I meant, that, that's...
Not, yeah, not precipitously, I think the, I mean, the chart from last year to this year...
It says four attorneys.
...to have.
Or investigators, I'm sorry, four investigators there, and, and two attorneys here.
Yeah, the chart from last year to this year is reflecting the two attorneys that Supervisor Bennett is referencing, that's 65 to 63, because we do have those two vacancies that are not filled right now.
Right, and at the same time, you have four less investigators, is what it shows, 28 to 24.
Yes.
So...
And those, that reflects the four vacancies that we agreed to as a part of the mitigation plan for last fiscal year to not fill.
Right.
And those would continue, and those would continue not to be filled in 2011.
Right, so you've made some adjustments to make that happen.
Yes.
So the 400,000 Supervisor Bennett was talking about, gives you the two attorneys?
It allows me, I believe, Mr. Jump, keeper of all, all finances, it would allow me not to lay staff off.
Two attorneys off.
And to fill these two attorney positions, right? Pretty close. Pretty close.
Okay.
We want to, we want to keep it close.
That's, that's not to say that I don't, I wouldn't really welcome the additional, because we, we are lean and mean as I have ever seen in my career in the office, and we're challenged by time.
Okay, so...
But maybe, maybe the better approach is for us to come back and...
Okay, that's fine, because you were asking for 1.3 or something like that, now you're, between what Supervisor Bennett and 600, a million dollars. If that's what you're good, let's don't do anything else. I mean, I mean, we've got to be as lean as we can.
There's still the great likelihood of having to have two layoffs at least, with just a million dollars total, as opposed to 1.3.
You're going to lay off two more people?
Yes, the total would be, with just 600,000, five layoffs, and 21 frozen positions.
Okay.
With now a million dollars, you're talking about fewer frozen positions, but still probably two layoffs.
Can I, can I, that, you've got...
Why don't we work with the CEO on, on that?
You've got, right now you have five vacant positions, correct? According to this chart, right? You've got an IA3 vacant, you've got an LPA2 vacant, you've got an LMA3 vacant, and you've got two attorney positions vacant, right? Now, if, when you talk about laying three people off, if you just leave those three positions vacant, you don't have to lay anybody off, correct?
Correct. Okay, so you just, all right, so 400,000 at this point works, right now?
We will make it work.
We'll make it work, okay. Additional 400,000 on top of the 600 has already been put in?
Yes.
So it's, so you get the...
So a million total.
Okay.
We will make it work, and I will certainly confer with, with the CEO as we progress. My intent, though, is to fill these two attorney positions, which are vitally important, they're the core of what we do.
But you're not going to lay off, you're just not going to, yeah?
No, not without discussing it with the CEO.
And, and I might point out, the, the DA with a $37 million budget, of our increased revenue, we'll be giving the DA a million of it, and of our increased revenue, the, the sheriff with 136 million is giving 1.1 million of it. So again, I think that this is, you know, a good faith attempt to try to get the district attorney full of mission.
And I thank you for that.
And thank you. And the system of justice, we're giving no increase to public defender or probation, and it is a system.
Can I ask a question, I mean, I appreciate this, Marty, now from your standpoint, as CEO, we're looking at, I have no problem with my proposals to make up some of this 400,000 through my own budget, or through these, if that's it, I mean, basis, how much are we giving away? I have no problem working something else to make that work for you. I'm not going to want to talk for you, though. I mean, protecting the general fund to me is, is key, I think it's key, and Marty's been very good, and the CEO, and all these people, CEOs have been very good to protect that, because I think it's, it's critical, we are not in a position, I don't believe, to be giving any money away if we can help it. And, so, if you, I'll leave that out there, maybe we don't do it now, but we'll leave that out there, you guys, you can come back to us.
Well, I, and it's been said, but, and the district attorney is doing what he should do, and that's to fight for his budget, but the department is getting a 5% increase, and 4088 has been overfunded since its inception, let me say that, not overfunded, has received excess revenues above the formula since its inception, and, and I think this is a good compromise, and, and my meeting with the district attorney suggested also that, as we know we will be doing in October, we'll be back here, because there will be further adjustments to be made to the, to the budget, so.
Also, for the CEO, we also have a proposal in the budget to have a contingency fund, I believe it's at $5 million for all departments.
The mitigation fund.
Mitigation fund.
That was the other...
That is something else to look at in the future, too.
I might point out, that's one-time money, not ongoing money, and it's, and it's to help somebody not do Prop 172 bridge, which is sort of creative, that's to help a department bridge to a lower, a lower base by saying, you know, if, if you can carry me for six months, I'll have a layoff and I won't have to do that. So that's a little bit different than what we're talking about here at this point. That's what that 5 million has originally been set aside for, but, but, again, that's one-time money.
And it's, it is set there for, for organizations who are trying to attrit down to a long-term level, a sustainable level. And that's what the sheriff did over the last year, is that, that he didn't have to hit that account, he basically tried to bring his budget down to the sustainable level that we had identified, and then if he had needed funds in order to do that, because instead of laying somebody off, somebody else was going to retire in two months, it made sense to do that, that, that fund was set up for that reason. So that is still in existence.
Okay, any other questions on this? So, you have a straw vote out there, Supervisor?
Yeah, I just, I just make the motion from the straw vote standpoint of increasing the district attorney's budget by 400,000, specifically to allow the, how many positions? Two, four, six, eight? Those positions that total up to the 823,000, as well as the two attorneys, assuming that they're going to be hired at a much lower, you know, incoming, incoming rate. And tentatively, and do that from our, our movement of an account, which is the debt service, that money that we freed up in terms of debt service to be analyzed later, I'd call that account the, the adjustments for economic impacts account, I guess, for lack of a better term, right, for, for next fall. And by the way, it doesn't have to be in October, you know, we'll have to, we should really...
But it's a total of a million, though.
It gives him a total of a million, adding 400,000 to the preliminary budget that we just adopted, the suggested adjustments of.
And the 400,000 is to be moved out of 172, or transition from general fund to, general fund net cost to 172 direct cost, as 172 revenue increases, and in the district attorney's share of that increases.
That's correct.
Correct? So that's a straw vote, and everybody nodding?
Madam Chair, I need a little more detail on how to account for that 400,000.
Well, I believe that the board is setting aside the 2.2, you know, they're going to clear that up when they do the final votes.
Yeah, I think fundamentally, it'd be an increase in appropriations for salaries and benefits on the DA's side, and then a decrease in the debt service, other, you know, other charges for the debt service.
Well, I guess the question is, are we moving the 2.2 to the, to the fund that you just mentioned, to a separate, in a special account and contribution, an allocation for an adjustment account?
That's right.
Is there something you have to do that when 172 gets there, that that reimburses?
Well, we'll just, what we'll do is, we will track, our office will track it, as 172 goes up, we'll identify that 400,000, and we'll just track it against it and report and if it isn't materialized.
Then it comes out of this economic adjustment fund that we're going to create in the CEO's office, we're going to create in the CEO's office an economic adjustment fund.
Economic impact.
Yeah, that, that would be, probably ought to start there, frankly, probably the simplest way is just to start there, move the money, the 2.2 million dollars that you're referring to in the, in the debt service, over to special accounts and contributions, 2,000 level, 2,228,000 and some change, we'll do that.
That's exactly what I was going to say.
First. And then what we'll do is, we'll, we'll take the 400,000 from the special accounts and contributions into the district attorney's office at that point in time, that sounds, that sounds fine.
Okay, is that understood?
Not yet. Paul, can you give me a specific budget unit for that debt service account you're talking about?
1075? 1075 out of, out of 1075 into 1015, 1010? 1010 is the special accounts.
Thank you.
Special accounts, 2,000 level.
Got it.
Sure.
Okay.
What's that?
Two motions, one makes the account, and the second one provides the funds.
Noel said you can do it one, if we, if we, if we all understand what we're doing.
Right.
Since we're, since we're just doing, since we're just doing straw votes, yeah, we even, do we have to vote here, can we just...
No, it's straw.
Yeah, a straw vote, you need a straw vote to approve the creation of the special accounts and contribution, and take it out of debt service, transferring it into that special accounts and contribution account, and from there to salaries and benefits.
Right.
Correct.
Thank you, so that's, that's the, that's the motion. I don't know how many times I have to say it.
One last part to be adjusted as pro per cent of revenue.
Exactly, right. Okay. Couldn't have said it better myself, right?
Peter wants to throw in 10,000 for this.
Is there any question on the, what we're doing with that account, then? And why we have 2.2 million in debt service that's available here for this account?
Which we need to save.
Because of what we did with the, okay, everybody understands that?
Which, which we want to try to keep as much of it for debt service as possible.
Right, right, and send it back there. Okay. Yes, I have, I have a request that I would like to make, and that is, I'd like to ask the board's consideration regarding animal regulation. As, as you know, in the presentation made by the department, they, they have a cut of $43,000, and one of the requests, or the request that they could use those $43,000 to be restored, is to hire a part-time volunteer coordinator to coordinate their volunteers, a rescue coordinator, and to reduce overtime in the vet office by hiring a vet tech, extra help. Now, the only reason, one of the reasons I bring this up is because all of you I know have, have, and I know Supervisor Zaragosa toured, and, and you've seen the great work that that small but mighty team has been doing in our animal regulation department. And what they've been able to do in a very short amount of time is to really get the public engaged in the operations, engaged in rescuing animals, engaged in, in lowering our euthanasia counts, and, and I believe also, our contractual partners, the cities who are part of the, of the, of the system, are very pleased with what's been taking place with animal regulation, and it's been a real team effort and leadership of, of our new director, and, and this isn't, I'm not saying let's do a reward here, I'm saying we always struggle with these very small departments, and this is a very small department, and $43,000 is a lot, it's a significant hit. So I'd like to ask that the board support in a straw vote action to restore that $43,000.
I second that.
You're doing a great job out there, you in fact have horses and everything, you know, it's nice and...
And also, I just, I really support any opportunity to bring volunteers in, you know, that's going to be cost-effective in the long run, and this is a particular program where we have some good goals that we can reach with the volunteers that we otherwise forgot.
Yeah, we absolutely do.
And then Fifi, my dog, wants to save some dogs, too, so...
Can we be...
We just need, excuse me, we just need some clarification on where that, where you're proposing to...
From Peter's budget?
No problem.
I'm happy to give.
Well, I would like to suggest that this be ongoing, that we don't deal with this every year. Obviously, we have to look at every department every year, but, and the CEO evaluates, and the department had the success of the department, and that they're still performing the duties and they're successful with them. But to every year have to, this doesn't compare, so I won't even say it, but I would like to say that this just be ongoing.
So take it out of this fund for this year?
Right, right.
Your two choices are contingency or the funds you just created.
Right. So that would be my motion, that it come out of the fund we just created, adjustments for economic impact account.
And I'll second that.
The straw voting, nodding, we've got four noddings and one, no nodding?
I have no problem with the volunteer, I think it's great. I just think that there's an opportunity for us to find even some volunteers to run that volunteer group. And we see a lot of the nonprofits do a lot of that, and I just, the opportunity would be there, I just, it's just a struggle.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think that's $14,000 of the $43,000, and so that she can hire a volunteer coordinator. And I think a volunteer coordinator could tap an enormous amount of
Energy.
In this county, so a significant part of that is that, and you know, you talk about not making
Yeah, I mean, for $14,000, I agree, that would be, we're spending the $14,000, we have all the
Sure. And I guess I would say there are times when some dramatic things happen in a department, and you want to try to reinforce that and keep that going. And I think dramatic things have happened in animal reg in the last year under your leadership, and it's been a new approach. And I think this is a way to say, go forth and keep it up.
I want to thank the board, thank you very much. You had said that you wanted to maintain levels, and I was going to come up and tell you that it's very hard to maintain levels when the numbers keep going higher. And we're trying to keep the animals longer, and so it's really hard to maintain the levels. But I didn't have to do that because you saw it anyway, and you saw it in your heart, so we'll keep showing.
And you are looking for volunteers, I know.
Oh, absolutely.
When you went over to your place, you mentioned that to me, that you're looking for volunteers.
And we're working with Volunteer Ventura County, and so now we'll be able to work harder at it. In fact, I've got a couple underage volunteers out there right now, kids that are out of school, put them to work.
Good, good.
So, thank you.
Okay.
The description of the $43,000, $14,000 for the benefit, what was the other piece of it?
$14,000 for the rescue coordinator to deal with the rescue adoptions. And then $15,000 for overtime in the vet office can be lowered by hiring a extra help vet tech.
So we're saving money by with that?
Mm-hmm. Isn't that right, Monica?
Is there efficiency savings?
With the hiring of the vet tech, the extra help, we'll save money because it'll lower the overtime.
Absolutely, yeah. My techs are doing overtime four days a week, five days a week right now, so that's actually going to help with lower costs.
Okay, that makes sense. And the other piece was, that's only 20?
The volunteer coordinator was $14,000.
And the other one was 14?
Right, and the vet tech is 15.
14, 15, I thought it was 40?
It's $43,000.
14s and 115?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's right, yes.
Vet tech?
Two 14s, one 15.
And when the vet tech, volunteer coordinator, what was the other one?
The rescue coordinator.
Rescue coordinator? No, that's fine. I mean, I have no problem. Let me ask you a question. You're saying that the $14,000 you're spending is going to save you money. But you're spending $14,000, how much are you going to, I mean, I'm trying to figure out, wouldn't you, out of your own budget, hire that person to save the overtime, or what was that?
No, the $14,000, the two extra help people are going to be at the $14,000, okay? So that's the 14 and 14, 28, okay? Then the difference is that I'm going to be putting it to extra help for vet techs. I'm going to be doing an extra help for vet techs that are going to be coming in from PEC. They'll be coming in at the starting salary for vet techs, which is, I believe, $15.71 an hour. And doing that, that's going to be relieving my vet techs, which are now at top of range, which are now working overtime, which are time and a half. So it's relieving their stress level and also relieving them from me having to pay them time and a half.
And are you using that savings to help pay for these techs besides the 15?
Right, so what I'm going to be able to do is I'm going to be able to, one, save their stress level and be able to put more vet tech time into my vet's office, and into the veterinary hospital, by being able to hire these vet techs.
Okay, I think I understand that. I get my confused, because it sounds like you're trying to save money by hiring somebody, but what happens to the money you save? Where does that go?
That's going to be because of the over
I know, because, where does it go? Where does the savings of that overtime go?
The savings is probably going to go to, I'm going to need extra vet tech time there, because of the overload of the animals.
So, okay, that's what I guess I'm asking. The $15,000 for the vet tech is not enough to cover it all. Because of this reduction, I'm going to get this overtime saved.
Right, it's going to go back into the veterinary hospital and the extra help for the vet techs. Right now, the demand for the animals coming into the hospital is enough to, that if I brought in the techs, that I would still need, I would still need, the demand for them goes beyond the staffing level that I have now. You've got to come visit, you are the only one that hasn't been out there.
No, I haven't been with you, but I've been through the whole thing, I'm just trying to understand this piece. I've been there and enjoyed it.
No, no, I've got my calendar, I'm going to call it, I'm going to
You just want me to adopt another dog. I already got a couple dogs.
Yeah, we got cats too. She has horses.
I got a couple horses, too.
You could even name after you.
Not bringing my daughter there.
Just to review, Madam Chair, that would be budget unit 4,600 animal services, increase 4,300, $43,000 in the $1,000 extra help.
Correct.
No positions.
In the $1,000 special account and contributions, right. Okay, others, are there others?
Madam Chair?
Is it? Which way are you nodding, Supervisor Foye? Are you nodding with us on that one, on the animal? All right, well, when we get to vote, be ready.
And Madam Chair, I'm going to talk about reserves for a minute, because this next issue, I'm not, I'm actually looking for board direction in terms of where to go with this, but I think I know where I want to go, but the, could I have the reserves PowerPoint come up, please? It's too small for us to see, actually, if you're close.
How many people do you have doing PowerPoints?
Yes, you have. I get somebody from Monica's department to come in. I just want to, I want to try to make one point for the board, and I guess if potentially you can see it, and if not, you've got it in your budget, got it in your budget book also for the public. But the bottom line is, in 2008 and '09, we were at $63 million. Then we had the increase in reserves, and it says $89 million in our book, but I'm going to ask Paul to come up, because I told Paul I'd be asking him these questions. In reality, the $89 million had a $4 million error in it, correct?
Well, yes, after the fact adjustment to those numbers, correct.
Okay, and after the fact, so really we'd say it's $85 million.
Now, these numbers are adopted budget numbers that actually are through, let's say, the end of August. And then as the CAFR is adjusted throughout the CAFR process, about, a little over, about $4.2 million was adjusted downward, as far as that number.
From that. And so that figure for 2009-10 would be about $85 million. $85 million instead of the $89 million that we have here. And now we're projecting that we're going to be at $85.9 to almost $86 million. And I would offer to you that that's that, so there's, you know, about a million increase in reserves at this point in time. And there, the one issue that I'd like us to talk about is, we talked about it here in this boardroom many months ago. Our parks department with GSA keeps coming in, and they have no capital improvement budget. So whenever they need to do something, they got to find a grant to be able to do that. And so we have all of our parks out there, and what we're doing is we're getting ourselves in a situation where the maintenance goes up and up and up. You know, at some point in time, if you don't get something done, it gets in much worse shape and it costs you much more. And it seems to me we are at the point where we really should change that. And I know I've talked with the CEO, and the CEO had some thoughts about this also. And that is, $300,000 for the parks' capital improvement budget would let the parks department plan much better. Now, that, I'm torn in terms of whether that should be ongoing, or whether we should do that out of reserves each year. There's two options with that. But my sense is, in terms of trying to run the parks with no capital improvement budget at all, is just, is problematic to the extreme and forces sort of this constant search for these grants. So I think it's something that we ought to build in, that I think it's relative to all the parks that we have, 25, I think, parks that we have. It's a pittance in terms of the capital improvements that are out there. But at least it gives them something to get started with their capital improvements. So I'm torn between taking it out of the ongoing, or taking it out of end-of-the-year fund balance, which essentially is designations, you know, here as we go forward. At this point in time, I'm leaning towards the ongoing, because I think we're going to have this conversation again, and we go back and we saw the awkwardness there. So that's my proposal, is that we have an untenable, long-term situation there with parks.
No, I definitely support having some funding available, and any kind of public facility that we have, to not have some kind of capital improvement program for it, you know, we have to make sure that we keep our buildings in good repair, our elevators in good repair, and for some reason, there's absolutely no funds to, you know, fix a park bench, you know, essentially. We just don't have any kind of source, so I do support making sure that we have some source out there available to do park improvements. So I would support doing that.
I'm not, you know, certainly opposed in terms of the board identifying some capital funds for the park, but I just want to point out that the history of this deals with setting up the parks as an enterprise fund, and the enterprise itself not being successful enough, as was anticipated, to generate enough revenue to deal with capital as well as others. So it isn't an oversight in terms of capital for the parks. The issue is that some of the things that were on the list to generate revenue were not developed. And some of the things that we had hoped to have developed in terms of additional, or income off additional fee-based golf courses, et cetera, has not materialized in such a way to not only deal with ongoing costs, but in terms of capital costs. So that being said, I mean, that's really the background on this. I think it makes sense to make a capital contribution to parks at this point in time, or at, you know, in some sort of an annual process, or, you know, or to identify, I believe when parks came up and identified their chart, it was like, when you looked at the whole thing, it was about $300,000 a year, that they seemed to be even in their own projections out. And then evaluated at some point in time if our other, if parks' revenue improves, because, and you may have a situation where you invest for a few years and their revenue improves in such a way that you can revisit the enterprise.
One example, if I might, is Santa Rosa Park, it's an equestrian park. If we get, we're looking, trying to get acquisition to a trail, we have that trail, then we can build the equestrian portion into the park, and then we can lease that out, rent it out. And that could not only be a money generator and help sustain that park, but also other parks in the system. So it's, I think, definitely a benefit to be able to at least get the improvements in place, and then you can make revenue where otherwise you wouldn't be able to in some of those parks.
And one way is to address it now, or the other approach that we had talked about was that tomorrow, your board is going to do all the year-end activities and year-end adjustments in and out of contingency. And the other approach is to take the $300,000 out of contingency for next year's capital effort at the parks. So those are your options.
Well, I certainly support doing something here, because I, the history has been said by Marty is correct. We had, I think, great dreams of having enterprise for both the harbor and the parks. And the harbor has moved along, limpingly sometimes, but moved along. And the parks have just, they're very limited. We've done a great job in divesting ourselves of parks, frankly, so that we could, you know, not be embarrassed by the fact that we couldn't keep them up. So the very few we do have now are mostly passive, are, don't even have the capabilities, I think, to, in some cases, to expand their business lines. So I think we need to, we need to be, take, this is a good time to look at, this is a long-time commitment by the board to maintain a certain level of parks for the citizens of this county, residents of this county.
Was that $300,000, initially, just start off with, and then?
Not initially, just start off with, I'm not looking forward to go higher.
So it's either, the discussion is whether we do it one time this year, or we do, or we make a commitment this year, that it just become a part of our bottom line, it's an ongoing, correct?
And we can, one option is the adjustment tomorrow, that we can fund it from that.
If we do it tomorrow as a one-time.
Then tomorrow, that becomes a one-time. I'm inclined at this point in time, whether it's tonight or tomorrow, I'm inclined to have us look at this as a, something that we would do annually, but we do annually as we look at our, as we look at our fund balance and where our position is, et cetera, which would be, I think tomorrow would be the appropriate time, I guess.
And we really do need an ongoing funding source, and ongoing funds for the parks. And I know back five years ago or so, I got approval at the board to actually use a particular funding source related to landfill fees. And that was to go for parks, and I think we did it for that one year. But I'm definitely supportive of having some revenue stream out there for it, and would like, I think, that would give us some good assurances that we're not going to see these parks get run down. We need to do that.
Quick question, Paul. Going back to this whole thing with our reserves, not questioning $85,000, $86,000, whatever it is. But out of that
Million.
Million, million. Out of that, though, a big portion of that is still owed to us by the state, all right?
Yes.
$60 million or something?
Sixty, I don't know, sixty is current, we know 20, and I would guess probably at least 40.
Okay, and I just saw something came from the controller, or, I mean, the, yeah, controller's saying something about, because there's no budget, we're not going to be getting paid, because he can't pay us by law?
Yeah, he does have some cash flow concern.
And he can't, because unless there's an in-place budget, he cannot pay us. One of the things, counties and a few things and stuff.
We expect, Human Services Agency is a good example, we expect about $4 to $6 million a month
A month.
In human services costs, I believe, is in that range.
So at some point, we have to, you know, I understand the parking, but we have to be careful, because we really don't have $85 or $86 million. You know, it's great to have a note owed to you, but when a state does $20 billion, and I think what I heard is you could lay off every single teacher in the state, and every single 350,000 state employees, and only still come up with about $12 or $14 billion. We still can't even imagine. So we do have to be very careful about this idea, because we could get hit. One of the things I'm hearing is that they'll just delay, and we could be hit pretty hard with another $10 or $12, $15, $20 million. Now, I know you could say we have workers' comp funds, we have some other funds, but those are set for real reasons. I just want to be careful that if we look at something ongoing versus a one-time is different. You look at, like you said, if you have money, maybe you do that differently. Because I hate to be in a real bad position next year and say, well, it's already part of our ongoing. It's always easier to say one-time no, I mean, yes to one thing, and then next year you have to say yes again, versus it's already in your budget. you have to say yes again versus it's already in your budget. But I wanna make sure that people understand that we don't really have, it's not like you have 86 million dollars sitting in an account, right?
No.
No.
That's correct.
So you don't have that money. Yeah, I think that's important.
We also have the opportunity to go back and say we don't have the funding in a subsequent year and look at this, which is probably how it got to where it is right now anyway.
Was the straw nodding of the heads that we look at doing this tomorrow as a one-time?
I guess...
I'd like it to be ongoing.
And I guess my question is, you know, is, I'm trying, I mean, I almost, you know, either it's if we did it as one-time, I would want it to be something that we knew we visited each year. And I guess a question I have is from a park standpoint, what's that do to them in terms of planning if they don't know, you know, if you know you've got an ongoing capital improvement project?
Has our contingency ever dropped below 300,000?
No, the parks has some contingency available. I think from our standpoint, we certainly can put in our policy procedure that we would come back on the final budget adjustment board letter every year and at least look at this and tell you what our position is. A concern I have up here, looking at next year's 86 million, is that assumes a $5 million fund, you know, what we think as a fund balance, whether or not that comes out. Each year, we make, we have to make an estimate at this point in time. So last year, we said it was 75 and ended up, let's say, 85. But we think it's, we think it's gonna be 86 this year. If it comes in at 82 or 88, you know, that's, that's just how it, how it kind of falls out. But clearly, we could come back every year at our final budget adjustment time and say, we think we have $300,000 available within our contingency, within our fund balance, whatever, somewhere within the budget to come back to your board.
That works for me, so that'd be the sense of my motion, just to do it that way.
Okay. Nodding of heads, yes, yes, yes.
Would it be the same principle then, that essentially it's ongoing unless we don't have it? You know, unless you have...
Unless we have a fund balance problem.
Right. Like tomorrow, you're gonna look at the fund balance, you're gonna be looking at year-end adjustments and you're gonna find that there's over, by the time we get through it all, there's a little bit over $700,000 still in contingency. So every year, we come back and the only time we would, so we would identify what's there and we would identify a $300,000 end-of-year reduction that would go over to parks for the, basically for the following year plan for capital projects.
And parks would at least know there was gonna be a discussion.
Right. And if it was less than $300,000 left in contingency, then you would know that because we'd be probably here to tell you sooner than that.
Sure. All right. That'd be the sense of my motion.
Is there a straw vote agreement on that, at least to move ahead with? Okay. There's a no, there's a four. There's a no nod. No nod. Okay. Others? Changes, adjustments? I have one more. And just as we talked earlier about the system of justice and the system of how we take care of our community to keep it safe and when we heard from Chief Crombeck about the great success with intervention and prevention and reaching out to our youth to make sure that they know they have alternatives to different lifestyles and alternatives to gangs and alternatives to perhaps opportunities for them. One of the things that I have been a strong supporter of for years, and I know many of us here on this board have, and that's our Boys and Girls Clubs. And I believe strongly that just as we are the quote "parents" for foster children in this county, we also have some caring and need to over, to take, to look over and make sure we are taking care of the children who live in the unincorporated area. And I'm speaking of both Piru and in this case, because of my, the Boys and Girls Club in Camarillo, we also serve the community of Somas. And in Piru, we serve upwards of 50 youth on a regular basis, or they have been served, let me say that, by the Santa Clara Valley Boys and Girls Club. And in Somas, it's upwards of 100. And in Piru, they closed the operation of the Boys and Girls Club in Piru in January of this year. And they closed it because as Boys and Girls Clubs throughout the county are struggling, they were struggling mighty because of the transportation needs for the children in Piru to have access to the Boys and Girls Club. Those transportation needs are still there. They serve both the Piru community and Rancho Sespe. And in Somas, which is a low-income community, and having, and we've had the satellite in Somas through the Camero Boys and Girls Club for a couple of years, and it's been just surprising to all of us, the numbers of children we're seeing there, as I said, close to 100. And they're at the school site and they're limited and access they have to computers and they're limited in access they have to some of the programming because of the school operational model and the summer constraints. So I would like to have some discussion and ask for board support to do some one-time funding for this year to support both the Piru unincorporated children, the kids who need our support, and the unincorporated Somas kids who need our support. And to ask if we could get, for Piru to specifically provide them the transportation from Piru and Rancho Sespe to Fillmore and in Somas to provide them with computers and also a transportation model, transportation for the Somas school for the, for the, these are, well, in the summer, it's summer programs and during the school year, it's after-school and to be able to get kids back home from the Boys and Girls Club. And as I'm sure most of you know, with these children, sometimes it's the only place they have to go where they feel supported and safe and actually have real programming that gives them training and skill sets that will keep them safe and keep them on a good path. So I'd ask for some one-time funding of $50,000 for the Boys and Girls Club of Santa Clara Valley and the same for the Boys and Girls Club of Camerillo for the Somas site and for the Piru Rancho Sespe services.
Is that three? I got two.
Two. So it would be a total of $100,000.
You said the Piru is closed now?
Yes.
So you wanna reopen it?
No, what they, that's not enough money to reopen it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You're just transporting two?
Transportation.
Two where?
Fillmore.
To Fillmore, to the Fillmore site.
Santa Clara Valley is, has an umbrella over the entire valley of Boys and Girls Club. They serve Santa Paula, Fillmore, Piru, Rancho Sespe.
And this is, what are you, what are you transporting, some YMCA bus, I mean, a Boys and Girls Club bus? Is that what you're trying to do or what?
No, actually, they would get vouchers on the, on the fatco system, which is the dial-a-right. And it would give the kids, the children vouchers, and they would have to have a Boys and Girls Club staff member on the bus with them and transport them back and forth. And there are about 30 to 50 that would use this service. And, you know, let me just close. The economic conditions in both these communities are really tough for the clubs to raise money as all of them are experienced countywide. And people think, well, Camerillo's affluent. Camerillo Boys and Girls Club's struggling. And for the unincorporated kids, it would be easy for Camerillo Board of Directors to say, we've gotta shut the Somas site down because we just cannot continue to do this. And in Piru, they've shut the Piru site down. So that's my request, one-time funds.
And then your computers for Somas at what location?
At the Somas school site.
At the Somas school site.
Where they hold the Boys and Girls Club activities. So there would be Boys and Girls Club computers and a small van to transport the kids.
Buying the van and/or renting the van or just a dial-a-right thing too?
Actually, actually, they have an agreement with a Ford dealer to get a bare-bones van and, so to get a van, basically.
Who drives it?
We have commercial-licensed staff, both at Somas and the Camerillo site, so they can drive it.
How many computers are there?
Four.
Okay. Because isn't usually the computers something that sometimes a lot of corporations donate and those kind of things?
Well, we've had some success with that, even at the Camerillo site, but you're just not seeing that same right now, that same generosity, even from the corporate partners. And it's, I think it'll be a couple of years while we see that turn around.
I'm sure, you know, I think I support that because I think it's important that we support our youth, especially with the prevention intervention and, you know, and assisting our youth and having the computers and the transportation, especially from Piru to Fillmore, I think is extremely important. And having the children have computers there in Somas, you know, they're still quite a distance from Camerillo. And I support it. I think it's a good one-time investment in our youth.
Thank you. Straw vote there, straw vote there. Do I have a straw vote down here?
About keeping the kids off the street and that kind of stuff is almost like a public safety issue. It's good. I'm just curious if, how to make it work and transporting the kids, I think Supervisor Jergo said is a good idea. Trying to figure the van, everything else is, doesn't work, I guess. If this way you figure it can really do it. I don't know if this is one-time though, is it?
It is one-time.
I know it's one-time now, but once you do it, they're gonna come back to you, right?
No, that's why it's, well, particularly in Somas, no, it's one-time.
Because we've been giving a lot of funds away to Boys and Girls Clubs in our, what you call it, money, right?
WIB.
WIB money.
It's all been going to Oxnard, the Oxnard...
Supervisor Bro, have you been taking all the money?
And $500,000, I think, was on the calendar.
I know, is there some, there's a lot of children where it can go?
Yes.
It can't go to some of these?
No, it has to, you have to have certain income levels and also volume and so that's why these other clubs have not qualified.
And Supervisor, the youth...
There's some information...
Oh, there he is, go ahead, okay. It's really helped tremendously in Oxnard.
Yeah, the WIB contracts for the Boys and Girls Club is for the year-round training programs for youth. So they're working with tutoring on credit, like credentials, graduation from high school, those type things. And the money is not set aside for like vans and other hardware and equipment. So it's restricted to that, that type of services.
Keep them off the street too?
Yeah.
I know as far as computers in the, for the after-school use, even the schools are having trouble with computers and getting computers in there and up-to-date ones. So it would be really, I think, a good incentive to get kids into the Boys and Girls Club too and get them off the street and...
Sure, if I could. I think one of the things I wanna say, we've made the distinction before this, in the board, and I think it's important to make it here at this point in time. I think we recognize in the, in the out-years, we have an ongoing revenue expenditure problem. So ongoing funds, we have to be really, we have to be super careful about everything, but we have a real problem there, right? A one-time funding like this is, you know, I think, very different for us. We did a one-time funding for Acela, you know, just a week or two ago, a couple million dollars for that, you know, to try to improve. So, you know, and that one, you know, brought to us and supported certainly, you know, by the CEO's office. And there will be other one-time funding opportunities like that out there. So as a one-time, as a one-time funding, I feel comfortable with this and I wanna make sure that we're making that distinction so that departments that, you know, might say, hey, you know, departments know what we're concerned with, just like with, you know, with everybody, is we don't want the base to grow that is gonna grow every year. This doesn't grow the base. So the important thing is to have the assurance it's one-time. I certainly think we have that assurance here from Supervisor Wong.
Okay, straw vote?
Great.
Nodding, nodding, nodding. Thank you.
Yeah, it just, we would, we would just move from one, from one level in our special accounts to another level. We can technically do it administratively, but we'll do it...
So it's at 10-10?
Yes, it's in 10-10 and it's moving from the 2,000 level to the 3,000 level.
Is that the designation for future year funding?
That's right.
It should be in the 2,000 contribution to others.
That's the 3,000 level.
Will you all figure that out?
Yeah, we'll think, we can do that administratively regardless.
Other governmental agencies is 3,000.
So we can, we can do that administratively.
All right. While they're, while they're doing, well, either figuring it out or if they're not, I have another Boys and Girls Club request in the unincorporated area. And I wish that Chief Crombeck was still here because I thought he said it really well tonight when he said, "Don't fund my program if you're not gonna fund these youth programs to do this." And I don't know how many of you had a chance to see the front page of The Star today, but there was a story about Saticoy. And certainly, Saticoy is a classic unincorporated community that will not be able to fund any kind of significant Boys and Girls Club effort there. The county put a trailer in the park at, in Saticoy and Boys and Girls Club generously started putting a program into that, into that trailer. That trailer is now busting at the seams. They're turning away 35 children a day in Saticoy. And in Saticoy, turning away 35 children a day, who do they turn away? They turn away those oldest kids just as they're in middle school and the whole gang-influence thing starts to come home bore. And so I just have, we have, I have lots of statistics here about graduation rates, teenage pregnancy rates, teenage pregnancy rate is really impressive, but the one I wanna call out the most is, and I believe our, our public safety officials do really support Boys and, Boys and Girls Club. I mean, total number of juveniles saved from arrest, they were, they, they've been talking about, you know, a single juvenile arrest can cost up to $80,000. And the total savings in California, they, they estimate as a result of Boys and Girls Club, $21 million in a year because of juveniles that are kept, kept away from this. So the Saticoy Boys and Girls Club is busting at the seams, absolutely real problems with the trailer. Gotta have, and they need to rebuild and build an adequate Boys and Girls Club. I can't think of anything more important for that community than to be able to take care of the children because in that community in Saticoy, those parents are working parents and those kids come home to no parents at home after school, great program. They want to build a $700,000 expansion of their Boys and Girls Club there. I'm proposing a one-time, take one-time funding, again, from this designation, and try to give them 400,000 of that as the county's contribution to that Saticoy Boys and Girls Club. And the other unincorporated community that has a growing gang problem is the Oakview Boys and Girls Club effort. And I have motions here for them to try to provide, one-time, a one-time attempt to try to help them. They have moved in to the Oakview Park and Resource Center and one-time $50,000, like Supervisor Wong, try to help them kick their program and expand their programming off to these older kids that they're having as the, as the growing problem. So that would be, my motion is the 400,000 for the Saticoy Boys and Girls Club and 50,000 for the Oakview Boys and Girls Club, both one-time funding to come out of our designation for future year funding? Is that where you took that last one? So anyway, that'd be my motion.
Again, I need clarity, is that coming out of the designation or a transfer in special accounts and contributions?
I think you meant the special accounts contribution transfer that, that leftover debt service, I assume, that we moved into special accounts. Or you wanted out of, you wanted out of the, out of the dollars that we moved, the debt service dollars, is that correct?
No.
You want it one-time out of, out of a real designation? Okay, that's great.
Yes, from the designation.
Okay. And that's where you were taking yours from too, Supervisor Wong? Okay, that's different than what we, we assumed.
That's truly the one-time funding because that debt service is ongoing funding, but we wanna try to roll back into debt service.
Well, we would roll it back into debt service. Well, we would roll it back into debt service on the one-time, that, that's fine. Right, right. So it's up to your board, we can do it either way.
As the other, I would take it out of this, I would take it out of designations for future-year funding.
Okay.
I would take it out of the designations for future-year funding, I think. I think that clearly identifies it as one time.
And Madam Chair, you know, just to, um, can add to what Supervisor Benny was saying with Cromback, you know, he did approach the city council regarding that. We do have, you know, the Fifth Street Boys and Girls Club in Oxnard, the Seventh Street Boys and Girls Club, and also the, over in Wayneimi. And we have several thousand kids that, that, that belong to the Boys and Girls Club. And with the prevention intervention and also the, the Alliance Committee that Supervisor Long and I belong to, we've reduced crime tremendously in Oxnard because of that, because of keeping the kids in, in the Boys and Girls Club. If you go over to Fifth Street, Seventh Street, or Wayneimi, you see that place is actually bulging with kids, you know, which, that are out of the streets. So I, this is, I think, a good investment in the future, especially over in Saticoy.
Is this a match fund? You know, if they have to put up the rest to get to the seven hundred? Do, right, I mean, it, it's, you have a timeframe or?
No, I don't have a timeframe and no, I don't have a.
You know that you don't get there.
I mean, you know, I, I, I'm sure they're going to apply for all the grants that they can to try to come up with it, but the community's not going to be coming up with, with the additional three hundred thousand dollars.
It's going to be grants and other things.
But they're not going to be able to do it if they don't get the additional three hundred thousand, so.
Or, or they scale the.
I don't know what they would do, but yeah, they wouldn't be able to do it if they don't.
Right.
I realize, and I realize the Saticoy situation is hard.
I realize it's hard.
No, I mean, because we're doing brick and mortar and that stuff compared to just trying to get kids to something that's already there to make sure they're doing, it's just, wow, that's a big deal.
And I, I would offer, we've, we've been patching that program together.
Yeah, there's no question, it's, it's.
It's just time, it's just a question of whether we're.
For four hundred thousand plus, yeah, that's, that's a big deal.
It is.
It's a total, um, enrollment there? Do you know what they handle on a daily basis?
A hundred and, you know, I, I don't have that number, I'm confusing. Oakview Park and Resource, I know, is a hundred and thirty. Um, and I think, I think it's, I think it's a hundred and ten approximately, you know, but huge. And just to be turning away kids, uh, you just don't want a Boys and Girls Club in the unincorporated area that has, uh, you know, certainly, certainly a high, uh, high-risk population in there to, to be doing that. And I might point out, that's my last request for the night, if that, if that happens.
Peter says, oh.
See, I was, I was saving the best for last.
Because the fund is empty, isn't it?
Would you, um, at this end of the dais, um, we, we don't have straw support, straw vote support, would you, would, if it were, um, to vote on those as two separate actions, would there be a different result?
I'm, I'm supportive.
You are supportive?
I didn't have any questions.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood, I'm glad I asked. Supervisor?
I would, um.
Oakview for fifty, can I hear fifty?
Oh, man. I mean, I, I, I have no problem, I think the idea of bringing the kids in, using that, that's great, uh, we really do, because it does give those kids an opportunity to do that. The other side, the brick and mortar and the other stuff, because isn't there some opportunity to, to lease a place or do something to be so a lot less expensive and get these kids up and going? Because again, I don't know, because I talked to people out there about that whole thing and they've, it's tough for them to raise money, you're like, really tough to raise money. I don't know what you'd do with four hundred thousand, could they even build anything? Versus, you know, so I'm not, I'm not sure. Oakview, again, I, I, I think that's the opportunity to bring some kids in and keep them coming and get them off the street, I think that's a good opportunity. So I, I would rather see that separately.
I, I, um, fine, I, I'll certainly respect that, whatever you want to do. I would, I would point out, I mean, that community doesn't have another location, this would be a replacement of that trailer, uh, and, uh, you know, and, and to do it right there, uh, but that's the spot, right? It's just, it is, we've scoured that, you know, there, there aren't a lot of vacant buildings big enough to, to put, you know, a Boys and Girls Club in and do safely and all of this. So I'm happy to break the motion into two if that'll help, all right? So the one is for the, uh, four hundred thousand for the Saticoy Boys and Girls Club, that straw vote, I believe is.
Four.
Okay. And then the other is the fifty thousand for the Oakview Park and Resource Center, one-time funding. And then I don't know what we need to do to set up the appropriate contracts, um, but we, I know we have to set up appropriate contracts there for providing these services, et cetera, is that something that we need to craft, that staff can craft after the board takes this action?
The CEO.
CEO would be.
Yeah, so you craft that proper.
Okay, anything else? Okay, going once. Oh, I have a public comment card, public comment on this last item.
Madam Chair, I was suggesting I bring out the nylon annex, you know, because it was a bit of a fun item. Next year.
I don't have a speaker card, but my name is Tony Stein, I just figured since we're in a generous mood, so to speak, I just figured I would like to advocate for a program, uh, celebrating its fifteen-year anniversary, it's the Oxnard City Core Program, um, it's serving over two hundred kids and is, um, received a lot of grant funding and, uh, web contracts and what have you, but, uh, they're still needing money to service their kids, especially in the summer times, and, uh, just hoping that maybe, uh, you might feel generous in offering a one-time amount, I don't know, twenty-five, fifty thousand, something around those lines, uh.
Thank you.
And, uh, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor, that was it.
Thank you, Mr. Stein.
We know, we know the City Core Program well, it's an excellent program. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and we're going to now take action on all of the straw votes. Okay. Walk me through this, Marty.
So you've done the straw votes?
We've done the straw votes, deliberated.
And we've got, you've got the written, these are the written descriptions of all the adjustments.
In the old days, we used to put it up there.
We don't have enough money to.
We, we, we gave that computer to the Boys and Girls Club.
Paul, do you have a copy of that?
So then the next is to adopt the deliberation adjustments.
Paul, copy.
Okay, we're going to, then the first action is to adopt the deliberation adjustments and as I, who want the straw votes?
That's this.
That's that list, right. And that was, I, I, I'll do my best, well, Paul do it.
I can, I can repeat them for you. First, we have, uh, four hundred thousand dollars for the district attorney on it as a bridge to the one-seventy-two, and that is coming out of the, well, I should say first, we're moving two million, two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars from, uh, debt service over into special accounts and contributions. And then out of that.
Accounts, please.
Pardon?
Accounts, please.
Two thousand, object in ten-ten, and ten-seventy-five is three thousand. Um, then would increase the district attorney's one thousand object by four hundred thousand and decrease special accounts and contributions by the equivalent four hundred thousand dollars, uh, account, uh, two thousand object level. And then we have, uh, forty-three thousand to, uh, budget unit forty-six hundred, which is our animal services in the one thousand level. And that's coming also, it's coming out of also the ten-ten, two thousand level, which is the special accounts and contribution. And then we have increases in special accounts and contributions, uh, three thousand level, uh, in the amount of fifty thousand for one-time funding, uh, for Santa Clara Valley, uh, Boys and Girls Club, fifty thousand dollars for Somas Boys and Girls Club, four hundred thousand dollars for Saticoy Boys and Girls Club, and fifty thousand dollars for Oakview, uh, Boys and Girls Club. And those would all, again, come out of designations for subsequent year financing.
Final correction, that should be the two thousand object, thank you.
We did, we disagree with that. It's a contribution to outside agency, which is a.
Outside agencies is for other governmental agencies, not nonprofits.
What do we do, is an agreement?
Um, what account object is? You all figured it out.
Well, considering we've done it for years under the three thousand, I just thought we'd keep it the same.
Then the three, then the three hundred thousand for parks is, is, is an action we take tomorrow?
That's correct, if you, correct.
So we voted on these separately?
No.
What, as a package?
Yeah, if you want to parcel those out.
It's time.
Or if you want to do it all as one or just exclude the four hundred thousand out of that one?
That'd probably be the easiest, if we just exclude the one four hundred thousand dollar contribution, then everything else, I believe, is five oh.
Back on that separate.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Is that your motion? That's a motion and a second? We get to use our computers?
Mine, mine went to sleep and it won't wake up. It's not working. I don't want to shut that off.
Peter?
Yeah, I am.
And this is for the, this is for the four hundred thousand?
No, no.
No, this is for everything but.
Everything but the four hundred.
Everything but the four hundred thousand. The one four hundred.
Oh, I was going to say, which, I thought you were doing.
The DA's four hundred in this.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, that's right, the DA's in this one.
I don't have a screen over.
I have to say yes.
Okay, just say yes.
I'm saving money, there's no electricity down there.
Yes.
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 Okay.
And then I'll make a motion for the four hundred thousand for the Saticoy Boys and Girls Club.
Okay, there's, there's a motion on that action for the Saticoy, is there a second?
Second.
Supervisor Jerko Sa. Try pushing your button, see if this is working, okay. All right.
There it is, okay.
There you go.
All right, so that takes care of the.
All that work, we have that money now, it's gone.
Okay, now what, now where are we?
You have all the resolutions.
All the resolutions.
We have to do them separately.
Okay, all right, the first resolution is to move approval of resolution adopting the Ventura County General Fund and other budget, funds budgets for fiscal year 2010-11. Have to what? Okay, I'm going to put a motion to do that. We're adopting resolutions now. For the general fund. There's a motion and a second to adopt the first resolution on the general fund. Everybody vote.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the second, the second resolution we have to adopt is to adopt the budget for the Ventura County Fire Protection District for fiscal year 2010-11. Resolution to adopt. There's motion and a second?
There's second.
Second.
Thank you.
You have a question?
Yes.
Oh, okay, wait a minute, discussion. Don't vote yet.
My question is a, kind of a big one, and that is, does this incorporate the rates and fees of the fire department?
As it was discussed last week.
Yeah.
Yes.
It was amended last week.
Right, it was amended last week to exclude that.
Those two sections you called out.
Right, I'm just wondering if we want to revisit the rates and fees to the fire department associated with the Acela program?
Yeah.
Now that the fire chief's here, maybe have it tomorrow, can we keep that one for tomorrow?
You could, your board can do whatever you want, I think.
I think it would be helpful.
You'd like to continue the fire protection districts budget until tomorrow?
That's, that's what I'd like to do, I think because the fire chief's here, um, we might be able to take a look at that.
You can do that, uh, I don't know that you need to do it because the rates and fees can be addressed at any time for the fire protection district.
Okay, so we're not necessarily adopting the rates and fees right now?
No.
Okay, that's, that was my question, thank you.
And Peter, that worked, my screen came back on, thank you. My screen came back on, thank you.
So I'll move the resolution.
From the right to the left, a nice pass, thank you.
Second, motion second on the resolution for the fire district, please vote. Okay, that passes. Next up, we have a resolution for the budget for Ventura County Water Ship Protection District. Is there a motion to adopt that budget?
Moved.
Yeah, there is, motion and a second.
I have a question on this one, too.
There is a question?
Um, I don't know, do we have someone from the Water Ship Protection District?
Sure, Jeff can cover it. Norm is here.
Okay, um, I know we had a question, I don't know if it's part of this budget regarding, um, a capital improvement project.
Of which capital improvement project specifically?
This is one that's been in the capital improvement program for years and years, and but isn't, wasn't in the one that we just saw, uh, last week, which is in, um, Newberry Park. Do you know if that is, was a mistake that it got left out?
No, actually, it hasn't been in the capital improvement budget for the last two cycles. And so, uh, this last fiscal year and the upcoming budget and prior to that, it was not in, it's going to be three cycles in which that project has been dropped.
If it gets approved, it will become the third cycle.
That's right.
Um, okay, well, I, I have a problem with that being removed. We, we just caught it, the city of Thousand Oaks caught it, but it will mean, um, in a longer time before people can get their flood insurance fixed. So I don't know why I didn't get any information why it was dropped, but I, I can approve this with that being dropped because it has an, you know, financial impact.
Yeah, actually, we did, uh, provide information to the city, um, I believe it was about, uh, about at least a year ago, that it was going to be dropped from our CIP listing. And, um, in our updates to the board on our CIP status, it was shown as, is dropped because it didn't meet the cost-benefit ratio for that, for, in comparison to other projects within that zone.
Yeah, I, I would like more information on that because I, I can't support it as, as it is, but I need to get that information, I haven't seen that information, I just know what the impact is on residents as a result of pulling that project out.
What, if I could ask, what, do you, can you give me a one-minute real quick overview what the project is and what?
Sure. Uh, what the, uh, project would do is, uh, basically, uh, protect a, a number of homes near the, uh, one-on-one in the Newberry Park area. I don't have the, um, specific number of homes at this point in time, but I know that initially, when we first did our first analysis, uh, maybe about five to six years ago, we were looking at a two-and-a-half million dollar project. Upon more detailed analysis, uh, it's, we come to find that it's more like a ten-and-a-half to twelve million dollar project. And the thought was that a portion of the project would be, um, essentially, uh, funded by new development within that area. And it looks like that new development, um, is not going to happen in the near future. And at that point in time, when we did the cost-benefit analysis, uh, we basically pulled back all the project because it, you know, it just increased so dramatically and the numbers weren't, uh, basically, uh, uh, coming to fruition in terms of being, uh, uh, really cost-effective. But, um, we are preparing a letter to the city of Thousand Oaks to respond, and basically, uh, we can relook at that issue if the city is willing to provide some cost-sharing for that specific project. I mean, that's something that was never discussed at this point in time in terms of, uh, um, additional funding being allocated or, or considered by the city. And so that could possibly, if we do get some cost-sharing, that could possibly reprioritize the project.
Is, is that the Meridian project?
Yes.
Okay, because that's something that, um, we're looking at as a park acquisition, allowing it to do, uh, you know, continue to be a flood plain. And I think that would then reduce the need for the project. So I would like to have an opportunity to revisit this.
Um, maybe, uh, another venue in which to revisit it would be when, uh, the Public Works Agency brings all of its CIP project to the board. I believe that's occurring in, um, in July.
Okay.
And so that might be the time in which we look at that, and we also are providing a prioritization of our projects at that time.
Okay, because, like I said, there might be an alternative project available and, and the cost sharing, so, um, with that opportunity to bring it, to put it back in, I'll go ahead and support the motion.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, let's follow on that, then. Good questions. Good catch. And that resolution passes. Um, now we have a resolution to adopt the budget for Ventura County Waterworks Districts for 2010-11. Motion, second to adopt that resolution. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. And then finally, we have the resolution adopting the budget for Ventura County Redevelopment Agency for fiscal year 2010-11. The Berry County RDA, I'll second that motion. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Are there any other final board comments? I need a resolution for GAN?
It's already included within our whole package. It should be included with other resolutions.
Yeah, that was, includes the adoption of GAN in the resolutions. Okay, I think that concludes the business of this budget. I mean, we have comments. Wait, we have comments. Comments, please.
Just simply that, um, appreciate the board and the CEO's, uh, efforts in, as it pertains to the city of Thousand Oaks and providing the continuing funding for the library as our agreement had called for, and I know we're revisiting that agreement, but I, I appreciate that that was put in, in a non-controversial manner. Also, we're looking at, uh, the future of being able to, um, sustain our, uh, public safety agencies and not see any crisis that I see, uh, from what we're looking at in our budgets that would, uh, require the East County jail to be, uh, shut down or closed or reduced. So those are, um, two big priorities on my list, and I'm thankful that this budget, uh, looks like we're able to sustain the services that we have, uh, have had in, into the future. So I'm grateful for that, and I also want to give my appreciation to, um, Paul Dersi and his staff for, uh, the good work that they did in preparing the budget, and also, uh, the CEO for that also, and, uh, I, I think we are in a, a fortunate situation, but, um, I, I think a lot of that fortune has to do with our previous work and being able to provide, uh, resources, uh, put, put aside reserve funds and have that available to us so that we aren't, uh, in this dire straits that other agencies are.
Len, chair.
Supervisor Ericosa?
Yeah, I, I also want to thank the employees for, uh, contributing towards solving probably one of the greatest budget challenges we've had in years and years and years. And also the employees that, uh, all the employees have contributed to three percent to help us, uh, towards a retirement fund, to keep that fund solvent, which I think is extremely important, and also to reduce the cost to the general fund. And also, I want to thank all the employees, the managers, and, and agencies for the cost-cutting, uh, efficiency and measures that we implemented with their programs to maintain, uh, the crucial services to the public, basic services to, to the public that are so important, and especially public safety. And I really appreciate the employees that, uh, that have taken the time to understand the crucial sacrifices that we had to make to, to maintain a, a conservative budget. And also thank the CEO and the CFO and all the managers who worked on the budget. You know, I know it takes a lot of time to work on budgets. I've done it in the past, and I know what it is to, to put a budget together, so I want to thank all of you for the excellent work that you've done for, for the county. Thank you.
Hey, manager, thank you. I, I think the thing that's the most important for me to point out is that, uh, at the best, at best, our revenues are gonna grow fast enough to cover our pension increases and our other cost increases. That's at best. But anything less than the best, and we have long-term, ongoing challenges that are gonna require the best of all of us in terms of trying to make that all happen. And that's why we, uh, have to be, uh, I think, looking out. We are fortunately, right now, nowhere near in bad, as bad a shape as, as most other agencies. You heard the, you know, the, the chief of police of the city of Ventura coming in and talking about an eight percent actual cut in his budget. We're talking about a five percent increase in, you know, public safety, and is that enough? We will not, in the long run, be able to sustain expenditure increases for departments that are gonna be greater than our revenues coming in. And, uh, that's the, that's the real challenge that we have to have, uh, and, um, we have to have in front of us, and everybody's got to be focused on that and be creatively trying to find solutions to that. Want to thank, uh, I know, uh, Paul, uh, I had the pleasure of sitting next to Paul at dinner today, tonight, and, uh, he didn't know everything that was gonna happen tonight, and he's, and, and, uh, and I just remember him saying, "Well, I might be frustrated." And I said, "Paul, I'm sure you're gonna be frustrated," right before the evening's over. But, uh, it's not, it's, uh, it's, it's a challenging task for staff. It's a challenging task for the board supervisors to try to hang together and have a collegial conversation. And I have to point out, supervisor Floyd, I really appreciate the hard questions and the sense of actually working this, you know, through and, and, and stuff, just like everybody else did, so, um... Final thing I say is, it's a special thing to have elected officials who work collaboratively, even if they don't agree all the time. And you, when you find bodies that don't, everybody suffers badly. So we can have different ideological points of view, but the fact that we're able to actually have healthy discussions with each other is something I really value, and I think that the citizens really benefit from. So, uh, this was probably showing it at our, uh, at, 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 at one of our most important times we were able to pull that together. Thank you.
I'd like, yes, also, um, it's great to work with a group of people throughout the county who, as a, as a team, try to make this happen, because it doesn't happen easily. And I appreciate all the different managers and all the staff and all the people that understand that it's, it's difficult times, and things will, aren't gonna be the same. And so I appreciate that you do that. Uh, I appreciate over all the years we're able to build those reserves so that there is money out there, so we don't see the mass layoffs that a lot of other counties and cities are, are dealing with and possibly the state's gonna deal with. And it, it takes a lot of hard work and a lot of tough decisions, and I, I appreciate that. Like I said, supervisor, we don't always agree on some of these issues, and we've got to be very careful, because I think the people of the county depend on us to guard their precious tax dollars that, that they're given. And, uh, it's, it's tough. There's a lot of competing interests out there. But at the end of the day, I think that, uh, we did a pretty good job of meeting the needs, and I appreciate the opportunity for your ideas with the DA. There's no question, I think that's critical, that each one of these people feels safe. They can walk outside and do that. Public safety is number one. And I think we've made a committed effort to that, and the CEO's office has always made that committed, and I appreciate that, um, and we, we continue to, to work through it. So, again, as a team, I appreciate the opportunity to work with you. I appreciate all the hard work that went in, Paul and your office and all your people. It's, it's no fun, and I'm sitting there, and you're going, "I think I had a big fun. It just shrunk an awful lot," but, uh, hopefully we have the opportunity to rebuild that, that back up. And so as we look forward, and Noel, your last budget deliberations. So again, good night, everybody.
And I'd to, um, extend sincere appreciation to all of the team who put the budget together, um, and all of the managers who have understood the, um, the mission and, um, have held as strongly as possible to make sure we reach those goals. I, I too believe that we're slowly turning things around here, um, not just at the county, but our economy, and, um, unfortunately, county government will never be, um, a fat cat by any means, because we are, at least at this point, still an arm of the state. But I think up here, um, we've done the very best, um, in, in both, um, being civil, thoughtful, and compromising where needed, and in order to really reach what, um, we individually have as our goals for our constituencies, but also collectively have for all of the residents of this county. We should be very proud of the many, many, many strong systems we have in this county, systems that deliver quality health care, excellent human services to meet the needs of those who need, need them most. Safest county this side of the Mississippi still. And to be able to do so with genuine, um, understanding of, of, uh, what it takes to, to get there and protect the taxpayers' dollars, using them as wisely as possible. I expect there will be some disagreement on some of the decisions tonight, but, so it makes it interesting. So I thank you all, and, um, Marty, outstanding job. I appreciate, um, uh, your very tight-fisted, conservative, um, approach to all of this. Absolutely, you've been there, um, but I appreciate that, uh, with the good work of your team, we've been able to accomplish, again, what I think is a very sound budget, so thank you, thank you.
I'd like to thank, um, the county employees. I think county residents don't quite know what the gems that they have here are. And the fact that we are having a budget session that is not entailing numerous layoffs and that is not entailing numerous cuts, not because they haven't been done, because you have managed. We have set targets and we have set goals that are very difficult to achieve, and frankly, which other organizations haven't even bothered to set. So you have achieved those goals, and you've helped us balance this budget. And it certainly could not be done without the management team that is out there looking at this stuff day in and day out. Mr. Dersi, it's your birthday. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
So, uh, good way to spend it, here with us.
Yeah, right.
Uh, I, I just want you all to know, all of the managers, all of your management teams, uh, you do the work day to day, and you try to make it better day to day, no matter what the obstacles are, and we all know their obstacles. So, uh, so all I can ask you to do is get back out there and keep doing it. So thank you very much.
Okay, we are adjourned. See you tomorrow, twelve, twelve hours from now.